Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the July 16th Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd certainly like to ask the Reverend Spot Wood to grade if he would lead us in invocation. Spot's would welcome this morning.
It's indeed an honor to be here as a representative of the North Dare County Ministerial Association to lead us in prayer. Let us pray. Glorious art thou, O God, more majestic than the everlasting mountains. Let the nations be glad and sing for joy, for thou dost judge the peoples with equity and guide the nations upon earth. We bless you, Lord, we bless your holy name. And forget not all of your benefits. Who heals all our iniquity? Who forgives all our iniquity? Who heals all our diseases? Who redeems life from the pit? Who crowns with steadfast love and mercy? Who satisfies with good as long as we live so that our youth is renewed like the eagles? O God, fierce you are and fearsome. Who can stand up to your rising anger? From heaven you thunder judgment, earth falls on her knees and holds her breath. You have brought desolations in the earth. You make wars cease to the end of the earth. You break the bow and shatter the spear. You burn chariots with fire. You, O God, stand tall and make things right. You save all the wretched of the earth. Surely the wrath of us humans shall praise you. May we be still and know that you are God, that you are exalted among all the nations, that you are exalted in all the earth. We pause to honor you, O God, to admit that you are God and that we are weak mortal creatures. We admit before you the sin we are ashamed to tell others about ourselves and our communities. We ask your guidance and help. Help us to see ourselves as you see us and long for us to be. We pray for ourselves and for others. On this day, we give hearty thanks that we have been spared an assassination and pray that such a wake-up call will redirect our national life in words. On this day, we give thanks for faithful service recognized and for every person who serves us and works to commute, to improve the quality of our life. Give us humility to admit we might be wrong. Teach us to hunger for justice, fairness, and compassion. Increase in us daring to stand against violence in word and deed. Break the silence that encourages and enables unrighteousness. Guide our affairs, taking us beyond our habitual blindnesses, to dream of the world you created in the beginning. Break down our divisions maintained out of our fears and anger. Lead us into the uncomfortable places where you work your healing. We lift up our nation, her history glorious and ugly. We lift up the peoples who make us up, all colors and persuasions. We lift up those hurting from illness, disability, addiction, abuse, and grief. Give to each of us and to all your sense of worth and dignity. Guide the larger affairs of our life beyond home and neighborhood, beyond county, state, and nation, indeed beyond national boundaries, indeed your entire world, friend and enemy alike. We pray for public servants elected, appointed, and commissioned in uniform and in regulatory agencies. This day bring liberty and justice to all, in this nation and your entire creation. These are our prayers. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Wood to grade. May we stand for the pledge. I have quite a few folks I'd like to recognize here this morning. I hope I do not overlook anyone, but we have with us Tim Sweeney, our dean of COA Campus here with us this morning. We've got Councilman Monica Thibodeau. Monica, thank you for being here this morning. We also have from Duck, of course. We have Todd Klose. Todd, thank you for being here from Manayoe, Commissioner. We've got our executive director of the, Vincent Sver, here this morning, Mr. Lee Nettles. And we also have Superintendent Bass Night in the audience somewhere, at least he was. He came up here and spoke to me before the meeting, but thank you all for being here with us this morning. I will, with that being said, I'll turn to the County Manager.
Morning, Ms. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the Chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, County Manager. I got a few items this morning, but before I say a few words, I'd just like to say we live in the greatest nation in the world, and I'm honored to be able to be a part of this great society and country that we live in. I'd just like to take a moment of silence to pray for our nation. Thank you. Commissioner Couch is not with us this morning. He's, he serves on the graveyard of the Atlantic's Board, and they have a special function today that he has accused of absence in. Ms. B. Bass Night will be with us shortly. She's currently attending a Dare County ABC Board meeting, and as soon as that's over, she'll be with us. Put a crank in their schedule by moving our board meeting from yesterday to today, so it messed up her schedule a little bit. First off, I want to certainly thank Superintendent Bass Night and Chair David Twitty for agreeing to hold a town hall public hearing on early college by the recommendation of this board. I thought it was a very, very informative town hall in session and public hearing, and I want to thank them and their board for agreeing to do that at our recommendation. I think it answered, hopefully, quite a few more questions that some folks had, but it was well-attended and it was a very good meeting. Like to tell you about a first for Dare County. We have Dare County block party scheduled. It's a first for us on Friday, July the 19th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it'll take place along Mustang Street in Kill Devil Hills. This is a free event. It's going to feature cookout, water slide, games, scavenger hunts, work vehicle displays, and among other activities. One I found to be really, really interested in, like to watch is we're going to have grandparents versus grandkids cornhole competition. That ought to be, that ought to be a lot of fun to watch. There'll be sidewalk chalk, chalk activities, a dunking booth, hot dogs, hamburgers, just a lot, lot going on.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. What time will you be in the dunking booth so that your board may be at?
I've not been asked to be, I've not been asked to do that yet, but I'm certainly willing to do.
May I nominate, sir?
So I'm sure there's a lot of people that'd take a shot at me, that's for sure. And then emergency services, we'll have vehicles there that people can check out our EMS facility, vehicles, fire department apparatuses, and just be a lot of fun. So it's going to be from, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on July the 19th. That's a Friday, Friday evening. So I look forward to being there and having that and having a lot of fun. Would also like to announce that the new fire station and our Dare County EMS station in Kill Devil Hills ribbon cutting will be set for August the 5th. That's our, our board meeting, and we will have that at 3:00 p.m. that afternoon. I'm sure a lot of you folks have ridden by there. It is an absolutely, I don't know how to say other than just beautiful building that's being built right there in Kill, Kill Devil Hills and well-needed new facilities for EMS and Kill Devil Hills Fire Department. This will be what, the third one, Dorothy? Is this our third one that we're having a ribbon cutting for? So we look very forward to having that ribbon cutting. If you're available, please attend. Like I say, it'll be at 3:00 o'clock on the 5th of August. I attended, last thing I have, I attended recently something very, very interesting that our health department and our local hospital, Outer Banks Hospital, are working on, and it's, some of you may have heard of this, some may not, but it's extremely interesting, and that, and the hospital and the health department is going to be talking about this in the months to come and, and helping our citizenry in, on the Outer Banks to become a blue zone. Some of you may not be aware of what the blue zones are, but it has nine, nine powerful principles, and it's, it's rooted in exploration and research done by the National Geographic Fellow, Dan Brutner, in the original blue zone regions around the world. I think there's five blue zones around the world where people live extraordinarily long and happy lives, and there's ways to extend that, and the hospital and the health department are going to do that. The, the principles are to move naturally. People in blue zones constantly move without thinking about it, gardening, yard work, walking, biking. The purpose, they know why they wake up in the morning, is to have a purpose in life. Downshift, they have routines that they, they share their stress with. They pray, they take naps, they enjoy happy hour. There's this thing called the 80% rule. They stop eating when they are 80% full. I've, I've certainly exhausted that many times in my life. Plants land, beans and other plant foods are the foundation of their diet. Wine, I like this part, wine at five. People in all blue zones drink moderately and a glass of wine. Positive pack, who you spend time with, with the longest living human maintains social circles that support health. And then loved ones first, having a life partner, and then belong, belong to a faith-based community. So you'll be hearing more and more about this from the health department and the hospital, and they're going to try to encourage our community to become a blue zone, which I understand is very difficult. It's only, what, Rob, what did we say, seven zones in the, in the world? So I look forward to hearing more from the hospital and the health department on, on that. So with that being said.
Yeah, I would agree, Mr. Chairman. It's a unique concept, and I looked into it as well. The hospital held, held a fundraiser, a large one, last fall. Was it the fall? No, it was earlier, earlier this year, February, and it was an extremely successful one, and it touted blue zones, and I had no clue. I thought, you know, the only blue zone I was familiar with was Smurf cartoons, you know, everybody's blue. Well, upon research, though, you, you find that a lifestyle, and truly, I know that's where they're going with it, is to have people embrace a change of lifestyle toward habits that just become normal in your routine and have proven through the very rigorous statistical analysis to be successful. They work. So, yeah, we'll see where it goes, but it, it sounds very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. County, County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to the service pins this morning. We have two this morning. First, we have Dustin Peel to get a 10-year pin from Dave Clausen.
This is the truth, I forgot again. So I don't have anything prepared, but I don't need it. You all know what Dustin does. I mean, he, best thing Sally and I did was a Zoom, our very first Zoom interview when Dustin was in Denver and brought him here as our purchasing agent, and since then, he has just gone forward and forward and forward. I used to do all the projects myself, so I know how much is involved. I did one at a time. Right now, he's got four, and not that long ago, he had five active, and that's not counting all the little things, because when it, when Bobby doesn't know who to go to, he gives it to Dustin. So, and he does great with all of it, really does. And what else? He used to run 100-mile races, now he's doing golf, so it's probably a better thing.
Blue zones.
Less stress.
But, but he, he, he's effectively now supervising our de facto purchasing agent, taking on more and more and more roles, and I just couldn't be happier, and I really, really, we all appreciate it very much.
Next, we have Barbara Hayes to get a 10-year pin from Jonathan DeWes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I have the honor today of presenting Barbara Hayes with her 10-year service pin. Barbara's a Juanchees native and lives there with her family. Barbara works with us as a scales operator at the C and D landfill and transfer station in Mans Harbor. She is many times the first point of contact at our facility, and she gets you weighed in and directs you where you need to go. On a daily basis, she deals with many customers and treats them respectfully and with a smile. She has to deal with many types of trucks and materials coming into the facility and keep all of the paperwork accurate to ensure proper record retention and billing. Barbara's subject to be called in with little notice on days that she is not normally scheduled, and whether it's to Buxton to fill in for a sick coworker or in the aftermath of a storm on a holiday or weekend, she does so without complaint. Barbara's a fairly quiet and shy person until you get to know her, and then we're all glad we do, because she loves to cook and bring in goodies to share, and she even takes special requests for the goodies around the holidays. Barbara's a pleasure to work with, and we look forward for, to her being with us for years to come. She does occasionally talk about retiring at some point, but I think we may be able to get a few more years of service. So again, it's my honor to present Barbara with this 10-year pin.
That brings us to our employee of the month, and if William Nash would come forward for
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, welcome.
I have, I'd like to introduce Sherri Anne Sarsfield. She's a Dare County employee of 22 years. This is obviously not what she was expecting this morning. Kind of a quick backstory, we recently did a cross-training program at the Dare County Water Department where all five of the chief operators, they rotated around to each of the facilities and gave their opinions and outputs. Well, during this cross-training session, multiple employees came up to me about Sherri Anne and the work she was doing, the recommendations she was giving, and what a great, what a great contribution she was giving to each one of the facilities. So one of the employees that she works with nominated her for employee of the month, and I have their words here in front I'd like to share with you. Sherri Anne has constantly demonstrated exceptional performance in her role. Her hard work, dedication, and professional attitude has made significant impacts at the RWS facility and to the Water Department as a whole. Sherri Anne's committed excellence sets the standards that others within the organization strive to reach and maintain. Sherri Anne has a leadership that creates a positive and productive work environment that supports those working around her, allowing them to achieve professional growth as well as success in the water industry. Sherri Anne deserves recognition for her achievements and contributions to the, to the Dare County team. She is a true asset to our organization, and I'm confident she will continue to make positive impacts in her role for those that work with her for many more years to come. So that was the comment shared by our staff members after working with Sherri Anne at each one of the facilities, and once again, Sherri Anne, congratulations on employee of the month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we go to public comment, those of you that received an award this morning, if you would go right out through this door so we could get a picture. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you signed up, I'll call on you in a moment. If you haven't signed up, I'll ask you to raise your hand and come forward. When you come forward, please state your name and where you're from. Public comment is for five minutes. There's a green light that will come on when your time begins, there's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and there's a green light that will come on, I mean, a red light that will come on when your time is up. If you're here to speak about the Dare County ordinances, section 16, S-16, please wait until we get to that and then your public comment there for that issue. First on the list is Catherine Sagan.
Good morning.
Welcome.
What prompted my comments today was the last board meeting, and I really wish I could have said something at that time, but public comments are at the beginning before we even discuss anything. And the assassination attempt on former President Trump brings it to a foreground as well. And that is that, I think, our assumptions. We, we need to treat each other with a little bit more kindness, and the discussion at the last board meeting that prompted my comments today is that some people thought the $25 million should be spent on early college, some people thought that the $25 million should be spent on doing the maintenance and the repairs and whatever that had to be done. And then a comment was, when, when disagreement ensued, a comment was made that that person just couldn't believe that people didn't, didn't want to do what was best for their children. That was, to me, a mean comment. We all want to do what's best for our children. We all want to do what's best for the county. We all want to do what's best for the country. We disagree perhaps on how we get there, and our assumptions need to be made with some kindness and with the assumption that everybody does want what's best, that we are in this together. We all live here together, and we are not going to always agree, not, that, that will never happen. The other issue is that it's really hard, like this morning, I'm supposed to be in court in Plymouth, and, and I had to make other arrangements so I could be here today, and it's hard to get to meetings. I have a somewhat flexible schedule, so I can, I can kind of shift things around, but you know, a lot of people cannot, and I hear that a lot in the community, "Well, I would have liked to have been there," but they can't. They can't get there at 9:00. You know, they got to be at work, and they have the kinds of jobs that are 9:00 to 5:00, and that if you're not there, you're done, and they can't afford to lose those hours. So two things. One, I think we need to make it more accessible for people to come, not just those who can be flexible, but we need to make it so that our citizens can be here and voice their opinions, and there need to be more public hearings like the one on the early college. There needs to be, in my opinion anyway, more discussion of things. It seems like, and again, I've heard this from a lot of people, it seems like when we get in here, those of us sitting out there, you folks have already made a decision, and it's just an exercise to, to have the hearing, and more discussion would, I think, take care of that problem. So I think that's really all I have to say. I have other issues, but I really wanted to focus on just the kindness and the assumptions, and not assuming that anybody wants anything bad to happen to any of us. We just need to realize we're in this together. That's it.
Thank you, Catherine.
Good morning, Ms. Havel.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Aida Havel, and I live in Salvo. I am coming to you once again to discuss the Buxton Beach disaster. It seems hard to believe, but it was three and a half months ago that several of you went to Washington and spoke with our federal representatives, and we appreciate that. That was around March 27th, when we had our first public meeting in Buxton. Thank you. And yes, Chairman Woodard, you facilitated a second public meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Coast Guard. That was May 14th, over two months ago. We have heard nothing since then. What has happened since May 14th? Well, on June 13th, the Army Corps of Engineers Savannah District put out a press release saying that they planned, quote, "to conduct geophysical work to identify any potential fuel distribution components remaining at the Buxton Naval Facility as soon as late June or early July 2024." It is my understanding that that may have happened, but why did they not tell the public exactly what they were doing? Why did they not tell the public why they were doing what they were doing? And I have more questions. When can we expect the results of the soil sampling done around May 14th? Have you heard from Colonel Sturgeon? When will the Restoration Advisory Board be formed? As each of you know, there is no part of Hatteras Island that is incorporated. We have no mayors, we have no town council, we have no city managers. All we have is you. Yes, Commissioner Couch is our representative, and he has done and is doing a fine job, but he cannot and should not have to deal with this issue alone. Every single one of you, by virtue of being a county commissioner, is an elected representative for Hatteras Island, and we need more help than we have currently received. It is obvious that no one who has the authority and influence to clean up this mess is listening to us, the residents of Hatteras Island. I believe they will listen to you. Each of you is a representative for unincorporated Dare County and more specifically for Hatteras Island. You are all we have, and we need you. Here is my challenge to each of you. Will you commit to picking up the phone and making one phone call to someone, anyone, in the next week, and then the week after that, and the week after that, to stress the urgency of cleaning up this mess? You can make a difference and help us if you will commit to making one phone call a week until this process starts moving. I believe that each of you ran for office originally, as I am doing, to make a difference and to help people. Now is your chance. By committing to make one phone call a week, you can make a difference and you can help give voice to the concerns of the people you represent. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Welcome, Mr. Hall.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jason Hall, I live in Buxton, North Carolina.
I'm here as a representative of the Buxton Civic Association. To be honest with you guys, half of what I was going to say, Mr. Outen took the wind from me, and gladly so. He gave us some great news to bring back to our community. You guys have, in fact, been working behind closed doors, it sounds like, to get some things done on behalf of the beach cleanup down there. The results from some of the testing that was done just came back to us, and it is very, very good news. This should make the cleanup easier then, because it sounds to me like now we're dealing with mostly structural trash, if you will, that was left over. Where I'm not a professional nor a engineer, I do think that maybe some of the paws in all of this has been what could have potentially been in that soil and what could have potentially been in the water there, where we don't know for certain with the soil yet. The water's a pretty good indication of that from what I've studied. So, again, thank you. Thank you for that information. I can't wait to take it back to the community. That also being said, we lost our point man. I don't know if y'all know that. That's come from some emails we got ahold of. I don't know if I'm supposed to say secretly, but Carl Doctor was the head of the AC, the Army Corps of Engineers there in Savannah, and he's kind of, he shifted. He's in Germany. He moved, and he's been unreachable. The Army Corps of Engineers seems to have backed out on the responsibility. We were promised a lot from them, and now we're not getting a lot from them. It seems like, and I had guessed this early on, this is going to fall in the National Parks Corps. They took over the property there, and ultimately, they're going to be held responsible by all the bureaucracies around them. So I think we need to change our focus and start going after the national park, maybe the Department of Interior a little more than we have been, where we had been led to focus on the Army Corps of Engineers as our cleanup, as the point people on this thing. It seems like that information may have been false. So we need to change our attack, if you will. And of course, again, you know, we need you guys' help. Ms. Havel made a very good point where we're just citizens down there of a community, and our voice has been heard, and we've been very loud. It helps to have you guys. It really does, and you guys know that. So, another thing I'll add, I know that you guys are going to speak about the beach nourishment move-up. My fear with that, and I think most of the community there in Buxton, we've seen it before, it is in desperate need, obviously, but without some sort of, and there's a lot of terminology I'm supposed to use and a lot of terminology I'm not supposed to use, but we need something in place to hold the sand. You're going to spend $30 million, somebody's going to spend $30 million, to bring this sand up on the beach to have it wash away in mere months. We've seen this multiple times. So whether I'm talking about jetties or groins or whatever you want to call it, I understand that the legislation has to go to Raleigh. This isn't on you guys. There's a law in place that stops us. Again, you guys have more power than us as a community. We'll back you. You can come get from us anything and everything you need, but we need y'all or somebody here to help us get a door open in Raleigh so we can start talking about changing that law, because you well know it's ridiculous to spend that money to watch that sand just wash away a few months later. I guess in conclusion, the rap board, as Ms. Havel mentioned, I hope that there's a way we can still get that formed. I hope you guys can help push for that as well. And all in all, just thank you. Thank you, guys. You made promises. Mr. Woodward, you were there in that meeting. You looked me in my eye. You told me you would get this taken care of, and you've been working very diligently, and I appreciate it. The community of Buxton appreciates it, and I'll make sure they know. Again, I can't wait to take the results back, and let's keep up the fight, guys. I really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Chairman, I know that we don't generally respond, but just to make sure there's no misunderstanding about what we have based on the public comment, if it's okay, I'll...
Yeah, absolutely.
We, two or three things are going on. We meet and talk, I talk with the Park Service at least once or twice a week. You and I met with them last week, again, trying to move the needle on this, trying to get things happening. She would, at the Health Department, is working through the state, and they meet regularly. They had a meeting last week or week before last. And so we're doing all the things we can do with the agencies that we deal with, trying to push this along. Dare County on its own, I asked William, our Order Director, to go out and test our potable water, both the water from the ground before it's treated and the water after it's treated. We got the results back yesterday, and basically, every compound that's in that water, we tested for, there's 15 pages of compounds here, and everything on here is below testable level. So there's nothing in our groundwater that's creating any public health concerns or anything. There's no migration. It hasn't moved to where we get the groundwater that we serve the community. So from that perspective, that's good news. The second thing that we did is we tested both of the ponds that were on that site. We had gotten some word that some people were concerned about that. So we ran the same tests on those ponds as well. The pond nearest to the road, the same thing. There was nothing in that water. There was one hit on acetone, which is a byproduct runoff from the highway at a small level. It was a trace amount that they found, but nothing else in that water. The pond that's nearer the site and nearer the ocean, the vials broke in transportation, so we've sent another set of tests back. We don't have the tests back for that, but we will get them back, and when we get them, we'll share those with you and all. But so far, on that, those water samples are good. Our biggest concern, while everything needs to be cleaned up and made right, is to be sure we don't have a public health concern. So far, so good on that issue. She has worked hard to be with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to be sure we don't have public health issues. And from what we know so far, we don't. We have not tested the soil. You made some comments about the soil. We don't have those. We don't have those results back. Dave Halleck doesn't have those results back. He's been pounding the table trying to get those results. Everybody's frustrated, as Ms. Havel had just talked about, but it's not from lack of effort. It's just from lack of response. And so we're still working to get those things, and again, we want to be sure there's no public health concern. One of the things we have been assured is that if there are contaminants in the soil, it doesn't become a public health concern unless you're in the soil, playing on it, somehow you intake that soil. The Park Service has that posted. They closed that area so that people can't go on that, and hopefully that will solve that. But until we have the results, I can't tell you what the soil samples are going to show, but I can tell you what the water samples show.
Thank you, County Manager.
All right. That brings us to Brian Harris.
Welcome this morning, Mr. Harris.
Yes, good morning, everybody. Thanks once again for all the work you guys have been doing. Thank you, Mr. Outen, for all the updates. And that was a lot of good news. As usual, I get here, we have a speech somewhat prepared from the Civic Association, and then Mr. Outen shares that, and it kind of rips everything up. We know you guys have been doing everything. July has been a tough month, I think, for Mr. Woodward. You know, we tried to get together, but right after the Fourth, and it's just, everybody's just extremely busy right now. We are continuing to press the Army Corps of Engineers. We were able to get access into the DEQ Laser Feast Site. It's got, you know, I emailed you guys that yesterday. It's 12,000 pages, but it's the whole history of the site, you know, and it's, all this correspondence are in there as well, so we could see, I mean, David Halleck, you know, the NPS, they have been, he's been sending emails every week to the Army Corps of Engineers. A lot of times, they had no responses. We do know everybody is really working on this, and it's great news about the water sample testing. That does bring me to the point that if we were able to test the ponds and get test results in two weeks, it makes you kind of wonder, where is it, guys? You know, we're waiting on reports and testing results from, I believe, October from the Coast Guard and testing, test results from the Army Corps of Engineers back in March. I mean, the county was able to get them in two weeks. I think that, you know, it's definitely, makes things a little suspect, you know. It is also pretty, like Mr. Hall said, the fact that in the midst of all this, Mr. Doctor has moved to Germany. You know, I'm not one to scream conspiracy theories, and I think when you start looking at all the chemical compounds and stuff, I don't, a lot of these are underneath our kitchen sinks. You know, the test results came back with low levels. I think at this point, we're more worried about the structure stuff on the beach than we need to be about the ponds and everything else. We do, I do realize today you guys are voting on moving the beach nourishment up from 2027 to 2026. I don't know how that all plays out. I do know that you guys are sending off the contract, I believe, for estimates. Is that how that works first? I mean, could we get this? Is it worth sending this contract out? Is it worth asking to get estimates to have this moved up to 2025? I mean, I'm sure it's going to cost an absurd amount of money, but is that even in the realm of possibility? We are, like I said, we're very glad that it's getting moved up. And my last point is, as Jason kind of touched onto it, we're hearing a lot of talk about the jetties. Cam and laws have been changed. Mr. Outen, we spoke briefly about it, and he explains, you know, it's quite clear that it's, we need to go talk to Bobby Haddock. I would just like to, if you guys could help, maybe the Civic Association, help us fight that fight, help us go down that road. You know, we're very concerned. I'm very concerned, and just September through March, it's going to be a long fall, winter, and spring for us. There's not a dune left. I'm very worried about Highway 12 and just losing that road. You know, I appreciate everything you guys are doing. The beach nourishments do work, but they work for 16 weeks to 16 months, and it just seems like with the way things are going, a lot of these coastal laws, you know, there's a lot of beach aisle, there's a lot of other towns right now that are having the cam and laws somewhat tweaked, and that's just something that we need to, we'd like to talk about. So I thank everybody for your time, once again. That was a lot of good news this morning. I really appreciate everything.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Jessica Barnes?
Welcome this morning, Jessica.
Good morning. So my name is Jessica Barnes, and given the comments that we just heard, my role is that I am the Executive Director of Outer Banks Forever. We are the official National Park Service partner. So we are a nonprofit organization that specifically supports our national parks here in the Outer Banks. And so I simply just wanted to come today to follow up on the comments from folks in the community, and thank you all for the work that you're doing to help the National Park Service, particularly with the issue in Buxton. I also wanted to recognize the National Park Service for the work that they are doing. As we mentioned, Dave Halleck and his team have been working incredibly hard to figure out a solution for this issue. It's complicated. There's a lot of rules and regulations that they have to work through and a lot of things that are sort of out of their hands. And so on behalf of our supporters and our volunteers and our advisory board, I just wanted to thank you all. I wanted to publicly thank the National Park Service. I also want to thank the members of the community that are doing the work to try to help us move this forward, and yeah, just wanted to share my appreciation for all of the work that you all are doing.
Thank you. Katie Morgan?
Hi. Good morning. Excuse me. Yeah, I really appreciate Mr. Outen jumping in and responding to that comment, because I was going to go into the Buxton beach issue, but it is nice to hear, you know, I like coming to these meetings to learn, and I do appreciate you responding so that, you know, everything I was going to say would have been debunked later. But that does segue into the next thing that I wanted to speak about, and that is just the meetings in general. What I've heard from a lot of people my age and people that are, you know, working in the summers, these meetings are really hard to attend. The 9:00 a.m. in Manio, any time of the year for people with jobs is very hard to attend. I would love to see a change to a 6:00 p.m. meeting, even if you had to break them up into two meetings, because these meetings do go four, five, six hours long. If you did, you know, your awards and your service pins in the mornings, and then you did the issues and the public hearings in the evenings, I feel like with the community members, you would gain a little more faith and a little more trust if they felt like they had an opportunity, an easy opportunity to speak. So that was the one thing I really wanted to touch on. I want to applaud, I love how Kildaville Hills Town conducts their meetings. They have public comment at the beginning of the meeting. They go through all their topics, and then they have public comment at the end of the meeting, and then they have a section with a response to comment right after. And I feel like having that unique, that authentic conversation in a public forum would actually help y'all's, not image, but it would bring more trust and faith into what's been going on lately. So I would really encourage you all to really consider, you know, maybe moving these meetings later. I think you'd have a way better attendance. I guess I do want to touch on, I do appreciate that y'all did have a town hall meeting about the early college. That was awesome that y'all did that. It was still a little hard to attend because it was 5:00 on a Wednesday in July. Yeah, so that was difficult. I had a lot of moms and dads that could not be there, but they did watch when they got home around 5:30 and tuned in, so, excuse me. So thank you for doing that, and I hope that from that, we're going to, you know, we've given the public time to learn. Everybody can watch that meeting and see the great presentation that Mr. Bassnight gave, and then from there, hopefully, we'll take the time to survey the parents, students, and faculty to make sure that it is not going to be a building that's built and just sat empty. It's a very easy thing to do. I feel like making sure that the public's on board is very, very, very important, once again, for trust and faith in y'all's board. So thank you so much, and thank you.
Thank you. That's all that I have signed up. Would anyone else like to speak at public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm here this morning to speak...
Please tell us your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Reverend Dr. Michelle Lewis. I live here in Mantio, and I'm a descendant of the Freedman's Colony and the Hatteras Roanoke Tribe, and I'm here today with Chief Marilyn Morrison, who's chief of the Hatteras Roanoke Tribe. I was sitting beside her, and I wanted to talk about the Black and Indigenous cemeteries that are here on the island that have, that are being desecrated. And I do intend to add all of these cemeteries to the National Desecrated Cemeteries List. Some of them are on county property, and here because we want to work with the county in making sure that we, as descendants, have access to these cemeteries, because we haven't had access, and some of the cemeteries we've tried to gain access to. And I've got just a letter that Chief Morrison wrote, and it was initially sent to the town of Manio, but the cemetery is outside of the town. Some of the members of the Board of Commissioners have seen this letter, but I just wanted to read it aloud so that it goes on public record. And this letter is from 2020, so at least this particular cemetery, folks have been trying to gain access to it since 2020. We recently did talk to the property owners, because it's changed hands a number of times. But this letter says, "I spoke with you briefly on Friday, June 20th, 2020, regarding the Scarborough Cemetery located at 1006 Driftwood Road, Manio, North Carolina. There are 11-plus persons whose remains are reasonably believed to be interred in the cemetery. The cemetery appears to be a dumping ground for debris from trees cut down and refuse thrown over loved ones' graves. Such disposal has caused graves to be hidden. It appears a chain-link fence was installed along the service-side road. However, vegetation is also allowed to continue to grow and hide the graves. In its present state, it promotes harborage for rodents, varmints, and a possible health, safety, and fire hazard to the residents of that community. Additionally, this is a possible violation of G S 14148, defacing or desecrating grave site, item A1 and item C. It may be possibly a Class 1 felony if damage caused by the violation is $1,000 or more. There appears to be some question about the ownership of the land and the existing trailers that are on the property. My findings indicate there may be violations of the North Carolina General Statute's Cemetery Chapter 65, Article 12, Cemeteries, Part 5, abandoned and neglected cemeteries that may need to be addressed. Who is here to speak for the dead?" Who is here to speak for the dead? How can the dead rest in peace? I have a personal interest in this grave site because of its historical and genealogical significance. Most importantly, the grave should not be desecrated. So much history is lost when graves are covered up and lost. Therefore, I respectfully request that the Board of Dare County Commissioners, one, appropriate funds to cover the perpetual care and maintenance of the Scarborough Cemetery located at 1006 Driftwood Road, Manio, and, two, to report the cemetery as abandoned, as an abandoned cemetery to the North Carolina Cemetery Commission and the Dare County Register of Deeds. I further request to remove all refuse, debris, trash, vegetation, overgrowth from the grave site, straighten upright position, repair and/or replace broken or damaged headstones, markers, and cement top coverings, to enclose the cemetery with a durable fence, to install a gate entry from the service road perpendicular with 1006 Driftwood Road to gain entry into the cemetery. This will allow persons to visit graves freely without trespassing onto the owner's property or having to gain consent for entry or interfere with the enjoyment of the property by the landowner or tenants living there, and to provide perpetual care and maintenance for the Scarborough Cemetery site." This is just one of many Black cemeteries that are across our island that have been desecrated. You know, there's Black, there are Black graves on the airport property, there's some under the aquarium, right? And so we want your assistance in actually preserving these graves because we should be wanting to preserve the history of all of our ancestors. These are my ancestors, too. And this is a really rich part of our community's history. So as we continue to reach out, we hope that we'll have your assistance. And like I said, I do plan to add all of these cemeteries over the coming months to the National Desecrated Cemeteries List because they're cataloging all desecrated cemeteries, regardless of who's buried there, so that we have the history for perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Anyone else like to speak in public comment? Yes, sir.
Hello, Chairman Woodard, Commissioners. My name's Tim Sweeney. I'm the Dean of the COA Dare Campus. And I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention here in our community that Dr. Jack Bagwell can be here today. He's with the Board of Trustees at the college. But he did write an op-ed. Title of the article was "A Strong Partnership: The Future of Education at Dare County." I urge you all to read that. It was in the Coastal Times this past Sunday. And I just wanted to say a few things about, as a dean and speaking for Dr. Bagwell. Our community is so strong, and I want to thank this community because COA Dare Campus, in the past two years since we opened up the new campus, has increased its enrollment 25%. The enrollment for the state of North Carolina colleges is 0.5%. So compared to the rest of the state, our community has really stepped up. The increased enrollment is coming from programs that we've added, but it's also in the curriculum area. The curriculum area, the dual enrollment for our county is the highest of all seven counties that we serve. Also, Dare County residents attend COA in a high percentage, more so than any other county that we serve. Pasquetan County is right behind us, around 25%, 26%. We're about 28%. I do want to say that our graduation rate for our students has increased by 5% in the last couple of years. The last three or four years since 2019, the Dare Campus has increased its enrollment 61%. It's just amazing what this community has rallied around the college. And I want to know, I want you all to know that the college is here for K-12 and for our adult population. The adult population has increased almost 15%. So I wanted to make that public so that the community could realize that the early college has really nothing to do with poor enrollment at the Dare Campus. The Dare Campus is growing. We do support our community with this endeavor and we're on the sidelines, supporting whatever the community wants with early college because that's a future, another avenue for our students to really experience. Dual enrollment, you have to have a 2.8 GPA to get into dual enrollment. We have close to 300 students in the three high schools that are in that program, which is just the largest of any county again. The early college, what that will do is it'll open it up to those students that do not have the 2.0 but have the potential for the 2.0. So we're here for that group of cohort of students and just want to let everyone know in the community that the support for COA, and now it's our turn to support our students, all of our students. So I wanted everybody to know about that article. Again, I'm just touching the surface, and Dr. Bagwell eloquently put it in detail as far as the COA Dare Campus and how successful it's been, thanks to the Commissioners, thanks to the industry, thanks to K-12. Couldn't have done it without everybody. This is a great, great community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Sweeney.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Dean.
Anyone else like to speak in public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Woodard.
Good morning.
And also the Commissioners. I'm delighted to be here. I am Marilyn Berry Morrison. I'm chief of the Roanoke Hatteras Indians. I want to acquaint you very quickly with us. We carry two tribal names because my family came from Hatteras Island as well as Roanoke Island, and they entered married. I'm here today to speak not only for the current tribal members, but also for our ancestors. Many years ago, we were given the responsibility of being the guardians of the land. So my heart was really touched this morning, hearing about the water concerns and the various land concerns, but also focus on the recent filing or the entering of Bill HB 385 because that resulted in a dig, which I know has been going on on this island for many of years. But we need to look at that bill very closely. So make whatever phone calls you need to make because we don't need any more developers coming in here. And I know you may not agree with me concerning that. Our island is very small. How much more do you want to disturb the natural resources that we have here, which may possibly be causing the problems with the water? More people, more bacteria, more chemicals? We can control this, and we can do this together. And we sit here making appeals to you all for assistance, and we are putting it on a waiting list. Everyone's got a job, we know that. We know you are full, your plate is full with all concerns, we know that. But next month, we come back here, we're still waiting. So something needs to be done. And I don't appeal to you, but we, as residents of this island, we can do our part, too. We can start cleaning up at home. We can start going down the streets, picking up the paper. We can let people, yes, sir, if I'm boring you, I'm fine. You can also encourage people who are throwing trash to pick it up, pick it up out of the water. We're killing the animals. We're disturbing their natural habitat. But that's something all of us can do in our own way. But in addition to that, my family has been here since before 1500, and we have records to prove it. And we have filed for state recognition as an American Indian tribe. And we've been on this journey for state recognition for over 20 years. The most recent update was submitted to the Commission of Indian Affairs on June 20th. I personally delivered it to me. And now I'm told that we have to wait until September to get a response. American Indians are the only people who have to prove who they are. But according to your records, we have everything. And to try and ask me to provide more information on what does not exist, such as the maiden name of one of my ancestors, but she had a child, she had a husband, we have it on all the other family members, but just because her maiden name is not on the record because the Scrivener did not ask her that, there's no way we can do, we can't provide that kind of information. I'm tired of going through loops and hoops of trying to prove who I am because we so frequently and readily, and whatever word, easily forget that it was the American Indians who were on this land before the foreigners came and began to mess it up. We were living in peace. We didn't have diseases. But when the Europeans came, it disturbed our balance. And I see the yellow lights on. So all I'm saying, we have to get back to the basics of doing things the way God wanted us to do. He created us. Yet we may be many races, but we're one race, and that's the human race. And I'm finished.
Thank you, ma'am. Other public comment this morning? Seeing that any public comment from Buxton?
Yeah, we have a comment. First is Ms.- Hi, thank you. My name is- I'm with the Buxton Association. We would like to share that we want another- We have-
Ma'am, hold on a minute. Hold on just a minute. You're breaking up. We're going to try to see if we can clear it up.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Let's try that.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm with the Buxton Civic Association, and I would just like to share that there are letter-writing campaigns that we feel was very proactive before in getting our cause known. We have 40-plus email addresses to the Army Corps of Engineers, the United States Coast Guard, EPA, National Park Service. The email address can be found on our website, buxtoncivic.com, as well as a letter template for Dare County residents to please help our cause and to go to that website and please reach out to these people to help our voices be heard past Dare County and past our island. I also respectfully ask the Dare County Commissioners to please add the Buxton beach issue to your August agenda. We of the community appreciate your updates and to keep- We saw your earlier comments, and we are closely monitoring the progress of this issue, and we appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Other comment from Buxton?
Good morning, y'all. My name is Brett Barley, resident here in Buxton, North Carolina. Sorry. Okay. Didn't plan to speak, but just wanted to also kind of, you know, echo what has been said, not only for the Buxton beach issues. Obviously, there's a lot of work being done there. Appreciate you guys for that and everyone involved from the Park Service and all. But more so, I wanted to make just another statement on the nourishment plans and discussion of growing some jetties, whatever terminology. Having spent probably more, more time around the current jetties there, both in the calm and in storms, and seeing how the water and everything and the sand has moved over the years, obviously, you know, Hurricane Sandy basically changed the face of the island forever. But what we saw starting in 2015 and 16, as the jetties started falling apart, was just a drastic increase in erosion because they weren't holding the sand anymore. And when did the first nourishment in 2017, it worked for quite a bit longer than the 2022 nourishment did, despite the fact that the 2017 and 2018 season, fall/winter season, was a much more active swell season, storm season. And that's because the jetties were still intact, at least, you know, closer to the beach. And so since then, in 2021 and 2022, we've seen larger, you know, 10-yard sections of the jetties falling in, the first jetty there, right by the old lighthouse thing. And, you know, since that, things have gotten even worse. And we saw them covering the old Navy base and whatnot. So kind of to just reiterate what's been said about the nourishment and, you know, an encouragement that like, yes, we do need nourishment, but if there's not something there to hold it, you know, how beneficial is it going to be? You know, is it really helpful for, you know, a year and a half, a year, whatever it is? Yes, it does help, but then it's gone. Whereas if we had something there to hold it, and Buxton and, you know, the southern end of the island, as you get access from Highway 12, is in a unique situation. You know, the Navy put those jetties in to protect the base, and then we built, you know, a village and an island off of that infrastructure that was there. And so now that it has fallen apart, you know, we're being faced with the effects of that. And so I think, you know, when you take into consideration the NC DOT ferry system and the fishing communities of Hatteras and the villages of Hatteras and Frisco and Buxton, and island as a whole, this is a very important issue. I think that figuring out a way to shore up the sand and the nourishment that you do plan to do is a much more proactive and, you know, just forward-thinking plan. Obviously, you know, there's been things in place in the past that prevented that, but things are changing. And I would like to see you guys, you know, on behalf of the whole community down here, I'm here, you know, on behalf of a lot of friends who can't come on a Tuesday morning, and just wanted to reiterate that, like, we appreciate what you're doing, but we do think that there is, you know, ways to push to make that happen. As we've seen some of the islands to the South and North Carolina make it happen for themselves, I think that, you know, we could do that here on the Outer Banks. So appreciate it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else from Buxton?
No further comment from Buxton.
That, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment.
County manager, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have just one moment?
One real quick.
Chief Morrison? I want to apologize. You mistook a scratching of the face. I was quite sunburned last week, and I am drying out. And you mistook my scratching, the itch on my face, for your, a reaction to your comments. I assure you, it was not, and I didn't want to leave you with that impression. So I'm sorry if it gave you that impression. It was not. Sorry. Okay, thank you.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
Chairman, item five on the agenda, the presentation for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting will be postponed until August. Sally, who was instrumental in that, is not able to be here today, so we'll do that at our August meeting. Which brings us to item six on the agenda, is the appointment of the tax assessor and the tax collector. And I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Chairman, to make those appointments, and then we'll swear them in after you've made the appointments.
All right. Thank you, County Manager. The, we'll ask Becky and Jose to come forward. We will make the-
Good morning.
Good morning. How are y'all this morning? Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
We need to have a motion on the floor to appoint Jose as the assessor and Becky as the tax collector. There's a motion on the floor then by- There's a motion on the floor then by Vice Chairman to do so. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
Has there been sufficient vetting of these two candidates?
No.
All right, I withdraw my comment. Yes, of course.
He's at 99.6.
Right. It's pretty strong. Those in favor of that motion, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll have them sworn in.
Hi. Please say aye and state your name.
Aye, Jose Wilson.
Aye, Becky Huff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Dare County Assessor.
As Dare County Assessor.
As Dare County Tax Collector.
As Dare County Tax Collector.
And that I will not allow.
And that I will not allow.
My actions be influenced.
My actions be influenced.
By personal or political friendships.
By personal or political friendships.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, the item seven on the agenda, the presentation on the Dare County Special Women's, we've moved that to August as well, which brings us to item number eight. This is a presentation from the Dare County Tourism Board for the Outer Banks Promise. We have Dennis Robinson, Jeff Schwarzenberg, and Lee Nettles here for that presentation.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
My name is Dennis Robinson. I'm the Dare County Tourism Board Representative for Hatteras Island. And I also am chairing the Long Range Tourism Management Plan and the Special Committee.
On June 26, the Dare County Tourism Board Special Committee for the Outer Banks Long Range Tourism Plan introduced the Outer Banks Promise, a destination pledged aimed at fostering responsible behavior and deepening respect for our local culture and natural environment. By showcasing, excuse me, the unique and special qualities of the Outer Banks, we hope to encourage everyone to take small but impactful steps to protect the area for future generations. The Outer Banks Promise is an early example of the focus and commitment and hard work that our special committee has put into over the last six months as we continue the process of implementing the Long Range Tourism Management Plan. This plan, as many of you are probably aware, provides a 10-year roadmap to help manage the responsible, responsible growth of Dare County tourism over the time while preserving and even benefiting the environment, culture, and quality of life for residents. At this time, I'd like to recognize Monica Timmado. She's the Mayor Pro Tem of the town of Duck and our Dare County Tourism Board Chair. And we have Lee Nettles, our Executive Director of the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau and member of the Special Committee, both whom have been instrumental in providing tremendous vision and leadership to our board and the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau staff as we continue to think strategically about what Dare County tourism looks like. We also have members of the Tourism Board with us today, as well as the Tourism Board Special Committee for the Long Range Tourism Management Plan and the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau staff. You guys would stand? Mr. Alton. Our Dare County Tourism Board Special Committee consists of 22 individuals representing a wide cross-section of our community, including the hospitality industry, healthcare, education, infrastructure, county government, municipalities, the environmental sector, National Park Service, Hatteras Island, Chamber of Commerce, nonprofit organizations, and member of the community at large. This group, along with the Visitors Bureau staff, have been instrumental in the creation and the introduction of the Outer Banks Promise. Now, I'd like to recognize Jeff Schwarzenberg. He's our Community Engagement Manager at the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau. He's gonna share a little bit more about the promise, but before he shares, I'd just like to personally thank Jeff. I'm Jeff's, like, one of our most recent hires on the Bureau, and he has been, he hit the ground running. He's making us all, making us all do proud, so. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Dennis. Morning, everyone.
Morning, Joe.
A few months ago, we collaborated with the local cinematographer, Nick McLean, to capture Outer Banks residents in their elements, to help bring the Outer Banks Promise to life visually. The result is a very powerful one-minute video that we'd like to share with you now, if possible.
The Outer Banks is an amazing natural wonder and has supported a special way of life. Let's do our part and take care of it. We promise to.
Discover this land of history and inspiration with a spirit of kindness and appreciation.
Let's turn what-ifs into let's be prepared. Pack it in, pack it out, and leave no trace.
Wander with wonder, sticking to roads and paths.
Love the beach, respect the ocean.
Be a wildlife star, observing animals safely from afar.
Support local. Small acts have big impacts. Let's all work together and make a promise to protect the Outer Banks.
Great, thank you for playing that. Hopefully, that helps shine a brighter light on the what and the why behind the Outer Banks Promise. Ultimately, we're asking people, both residents and visitors, to make a promise to protect this place by looking at what makes this place special and why it's worth protecting. Generally speaking, creating such a destination pledge engages resident and visitor emotions to inspire them to show their level of care for the Outer Banks. It encourages them to take action rather than passively reading a list of guidelines. And it also asks them to make their promise public by signing the pledge online as a show of support. We launched the Outer Banks Promise three weeks ago, and we're still in the very early stages of awareness and education. As a bureau, we've activated some of our owned media assets, such as website, social media, our email database and partnerships, as well as local and regional advertising platforms. And we've initiated some grassroots efforts at our welcome centers and at local community events. So as we move forward, how can you, our Dare County neighbors, help to show support and spread the word about the Outer Banks Promise? Well, the easiest thing you can do is to visit obxpromise.com to learn more and to make your promise by filling out the online form. It's very simple, and it literally takes just a moment. If you are affiliated with the Dare County Business, Association, or Organization, you may also help by sharing the promise by including a link to the promise, again, obxpromise.com, on your website, creating a blog or social media post about this, sharing the promise video that you just saw on your website or via social media, and including the promise in an upcoming email newsletter. We also recently created a partner toolkit that provides suggested website, email, and social media copy, links, images, and more to make it easy to share this information. The more support that we receive in amplifying this message, the greater the impact. This is not a short-term approach or a quick burst campaign. It's a key strategic step in a long-term commitment that the Visitors Bureau, the Tourism Board, and the Special Committee has made as we explore, again, responsible ways to manage both the positive and negative impacts of tourism in our county. Thank you very much for this opportunity to share information about the Outer Banks Promise. And as always, we welcome input and feedback, not only about the promise, but about the Long Range Tourism Management Plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Nick.
Chairman, that brings us to item nine on the agenda. At our last board meeting, we discussed the balloon release ordinances and the changes to Chapter 96 of our littering ordinance to cover that. You set a public hearing for today, so we'll conduct that public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, now the time has been set aside for a public hearing. This hearing is with regard to changes to Chapter 96 of the Dare County Code of Ordinances with regard to balloon releases. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak to that issue?
Welcome this morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Debbie Swick. I am the creator of Ban Balloon Releases in North Carolina. I don't know if you can see this. I'm gonna move this here for a minute. This bag was collected by five of us over six months. Just five people. There's several hundred balloons in there. Balloon releases occur for graduations, gender reveals, weddings, and memorials. The National Park Service last year, again, picked up 1,786 balloons along a 70-mile stretch of coastline. The year before, that was 733. It increased over 1,000. It takes 100 years for a Mylar balloon to break down. Latex balloons take five to six years. They never biodegrade completely. They turn into microplastics. As you can see, some of those balloons have no color left in them. Those are the microplastics from the metal and the petroleum and the plastics on those balloons. They are now inundating our oceans and affecting all of us that eat seafood and the chain of food that continues. All affected by microplastics. I understand that it is hard to enforce this. The General Statute 14-399 for North Carolina states that litter is considered when it is on the ground. Therefore, helium balloons need a specific ordinance. It is a very important thing to have a significant fine along with this ordinance. The $250 considered is wonderful. I'm hoping that it would be a deterrent from the very beginning, that people would see that amount afflicted on a fine of a balloon release and choose not to do it. But we need to have some laws that state, do not release them. Releases that are intentional is what we're targeting today. I ask you to consider in the future, no more tying of balloons outdoors. They break free, they float away, and once they float away, they are unretrievable. The National, I'm sorry, the Outer Banks Association of Realtors did away with all intentionally tied balloons outdoors on porches, mailbox, and mailboxes and signs because they recognized that balloons do break free in our windy climate. I would love to see weights attached to all balloons sold in Dare County. If that is not something we could do, we'll wait till we get to the state level. But there's a lot of work to be done, and I couldn't be prouder of the place that I live. You've heard everybody else speak today about the environment and about the effects of litter. Balloons are something that we can control. Not trying to make them go away, just trying to act on responsibility when it comes to owning these balloons. So thank you very much for your consideration for this ordinance before you. I know that every decision that you make is for the betterment of this area, the people, and its environment, and you are saving wildlife. Every balloon in that bag has saved some living creature, be it a sea turtle, whale, or dolphin, or seabird, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Debbie.
Anyone else like to speak to this issue?
Rick Shafton from Rodanthe. And it's unfortunate Commissioner Couch isn't here because this proposal affects Hatteras Island. It's an example of a solution in search of a problem. There's some litter. There's litter all over the place. Litter's already illegal. I don't know if anybody knows this. It's already illegal to litter. So now how are we gonna do? What, first off, this wide-reaching proposal actually bans water balloon fights. It, and if somebody releases a balloon and it's in the air, where's the evidence of who released it? So we're gonna have cameras on the beaches now. We're gonna have cameras to see somebody releasing a balloon. This is a totally ridiculous ordinance. We've got a lot of issues in Hatteras Island. We've got the issue with Buxton Beach, which unfortunately Ms. Havel decided to politicize and attack you guys who are all doing a fine job on this. If there's a problem with the National Park Service or the Department of Interior or the Army Corps of Engineers, who's running these agencies? It's Joe Biden and Kamala Harris. So Ms. Havel should address her concerns to the Democrats who are ignoring Hatteras Island because they've got other priorities, one of which is not this island. The problems on Hatteras Island, the biggest problem we have is that traffic circle. On Saturday, you can't leave the island. I can leave the island because I'm north of the circle. Anybody south of that circle can't leave the island. Coming back on Saturday afternoon, you can't get, it's a mile and a half backup. That circle needs to be replaced. Either give us a stop sign on the north side, we'll stop like we always did, or just build an overpass. You've got crosswalks where nobody even knows to stop at a crosswalk. You can have a light there if people could push and they'd see that it would flash. And if there's a littering problem, doing a video isn't gonna stop people from littering. If you have a problem with littering, put signs up saying, "Don't litter." Keep beaches clean, don't litter. That's gonna do as much as any video, any law, or anything else. We're passing too many laws. We're not enforcing the ones we have. We have laws against people shooting rockets off. Nobody enforces those laws either. So you probably will pass it because it makes everybody feel good to pass these things. Several years ago, fortunately, Commissioner Ross stopped you guys from passing a ban on plastic straws. You know, I moved out of the north to get away from this crap. I don't want to see it following me down here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rick.
Anyone else like to speak to this issue? Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, we close the public hearing, and I would turn it back over to you.
See where we are. I will ask the pleasure of the board, what is their, what is their pleasure on this releasing balloons with unincorporated there? I'll open the floor for discussion. Make a motion to a duck.
Second.
Okay, there's, so no discussion is, well, we'll have discussion in a minute. There's a motion on the floor then to adopt the resolution as presented by Commissioner House, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Do we have any further discussion concerning the resolution?
I think if you pick up the broken water balloons after the fight, there would be no violation, but I'm pretty sure that's right.
Yep. Any further comments? Then those in favor of the motion, then signify by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign. Then the motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item 10 on the agenda. This is a public hearing with regard to the Dare County Ordinances S16. Every so year, so many years, we bring in and codify all the ordinances that we've adopted since the last time we did what you were about to do. There's no new ordinances in here. Nothing has changed. There's nothing that you haven't already passed. But this brings it all together in one place, re-codifies them so that our ordinance book is up to date. And then we create ordinances as we go forward and do it again in a couple of years. So this is before you. We have to have a public hearing to do this. I'll open that public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak to that issue? Is there anyone in Buxton like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
All right, with that said, we would close the public hearing, and it's before you to approve the codification of those ordinances.
Yeah, if you'll read the resolution, Bobby.
Sure. Whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio has completed the S16 supplement to the Dare County Code of Ordinances, which supplements contain all the ordinance of a general and permanent nature enacted since the prior supplement to the Dare County Code of Ordinances. And whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation has recommended the revision or addition of certain sections of the code which are based on or make reference to the North Carolina general statutes. And where it is in the intent of the Dare County Board of Commissioners to accept these updated sections in accordance with the changes in the law of the state of North Carolina. And where it is necessary to provide for the usual daily operation of the county and for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare of Dare County that this ordinance take effect at an early date. Therefore, be it resolved by the Dare County Board of Commissioners that the 2024 S16 supplement to the Dare County Code of Ordinances as submitted by American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio and attached hereto is hereby adopted by reference
Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio, and attached hereto, is hereby adopted by reference as is set out in its entirety. Two such supplements shall be deemed published as of the date of its adoption and approved by the Dare County Board of Commissioners, and such supplements shall be inserted into the code of ordinances kept on file in the office of the clerk, this the 16th day of July 2024.
Pleasure of the board?
Pleasure to adopt.
Okay, it's a resolution by Commissioner House to enact and adopt the supplements to Dare County Code of Ordinances. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by the vice chairman. The floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item 11 on the agenda. This is a special use permit for a home occupation, and Morgan Potts from our planning department's here for that.
Good morning, everyone.
Before you start, one last thing, Mr. Chairman, just for the record. All the parties have been sworn for this.
All right, great.
Good morning, everyone. Ms. Rachel Sanchez has submitted a special use permit application for a proposed home occupation with the intent to produce and package baked goods for retail sale at her home at 113 Hickory Ridge in Collington. The site is zoned RS1, single-family residential, and home occupations are permitted as special uses in the zoning district. On June 4, 2024, the planning board reviewed the application for a home occupation and passed a motion finding these conditions to be reasonable and appropriate to apply to the proposed use. Ms. Sanchez is here if you have any questions, and I'm open for any questions you may have as well.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sanchez, do you have any samples with you this morning? I'm just kidding.
Unfortunately, I don't today.
I'm just kidding with you. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Sanchez?
I do, Mr. Chairman, just to get the record straight. Ms. Sanchez, do you consent to the facts as they were just outlined?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And do you also consent to the things that you gave the planning department as evidence to be presented into your file?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And finally, do you consent to the terms of the special use permit as presented?
I do.
Thank you, county manager. The pleasure of the board then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the proposed home occupation submitted by Ms. Rachel Sanchez at 113 Hickory Ridge Court in Collington be approved as presented.
Second. There's a motion on the floor by the vice chair to approve, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman without prejudice, meaning they hadn't sampled your cookies.
I was holding out for a sample, but obviously I was.
But any further discussion by the board?
My only concern is, essentially, this baked goods and the residential housing. I know it's kind of far-reaching for this. I know we're just trying to say, yes, she can do it in her home, but I'm wondering about the health code stuff for commercially baked goods in a residential house.
I think that was in the.
It was in the.
It was in there.
It was in the.
Yeah. It was in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
It doesn't come under, I think.
It doesn't, yeah.
The Dare County Health.
Okay.
Yes, I've been licensed as a home processor.
Right.
Okay, I got you.
All right, anyone else?
I just have a question. How do you plan to advertise?
So I currently use social media mostly, and orders are taken custom. So I don't, you know, ask people to come to my house and, you know, set up and sell things there. It's mostly made to order and also doing the summer markets around the community.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Those in favor of the motion then, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Ms. Sanchez, good luck to you. I wish you the very best.
Thank you so much.
This brings us to item 12 on the agenda. This is a proclamation designating July as Parks and Recreation Month, and Spencer Gregory's here with that proclamation.
Good morning, Spencer.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I have Charlotte Midget here with me as well. She is the Leisure Supervisor in the Kedova Hills Division. First of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your support of Parks and Recreation, and look forward to your continued support. We also, and Chairman Woodard, in your opening comments, thank you for promoting our big event that Charlotte was instrumental in planning this Friday. It is a block party at the Mustian Street area, the Baum Center area at Rec Park. We have lots of events planned, as you mentioned, so we hope to see you guys all out there. I'll be on the grill cooking some hamburgers and hot dogs, and hopefully the weather will stay good for us. So I'm here today to, since 1985, the United States has celebrated Parks and Recreation Month in July to promote strong, vibrant, and resilient communities through the power of Parks and Recreation. I believe you guys have the proclamation. I will go ahead and just read through it. And this is an NRPA national initiative, where is Parks and Recreation is integral part of communities throughout this country, including Dare County, and where is Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and where is Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And where is Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And where is Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutritional services, and education. And where is Parks and Recreation programming and educational activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And where is Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And where is Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And where is Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And where is our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of the community and to provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And where is the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And where is Dare County recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Dare County Board of Commissioners that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in July.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this from the board?
Most to approve.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve.
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further comments? Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you for your support.
Look forward to seeing you this Friday.
Yeah, we hope to see you guys out there.
Chairman, item 13 on the agenda is a request to create the Thomas A. Baum Center Advisory Board. We have with us General Winer, the Director of the Baum Center, Mary Pendle, the Chairman of the Older Adult Advisory Board, and Maggie Dennis, the Vice Chairman of the Dare County Older Adult Advisory Board, as well as Spencer Gregory. In your packet, you have the memo. Our other centers have boards. This is fallen under the, the Baum Center is fallen under the Older Adults Advisory Board. They're asking to create a board specific to the Baum Center. I'll let them speak to those issues, and I'd ask them to be sure that, you know, we weren't ruffling feathers at the Older Adult Advisory Board as well, and so I'll let them take it from there.
Yep, so the Baum Center does not have a current board, and the Older Adult Services is represented here by Chairman Mary Pendle and Vice Chairman Maggie Dennis. And they're going to be instrumental in creating this board. It's going to mirror the Virginia Tillot Center Bylaw Board, and we'll bring all those bylaws to you for approval as well. This is just to adopt the creation of the original board to help provide continued services, and they are also trying to become a National North Carolina Association of Aging Senior of Excellence certification. And so this is required, it's required to have an advisory board for that certification. So we're just asking for your approval of the creation of the board.
Okay, is any questions of the ladies?
Well, I sit on the board with Mary here at the Virginia Tillot Center, which is my favorite board, by the way. No offense. It's really good, and I'm actually very pleased to see this. I suspect they will operate similarly, almost in parallel. Chair, does that make sense, guys? Okay, yeah, it sounded like a great plan to me, so thanks, yeah.
I agree, I make a motion.
All right. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, and it's, I believe, was it Commissioner House seconded. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say I was a member of the original board for the Virginia Tillot Center, back when it was the Dare County Center, and it's a great board, as you said. It's one of mine, too. And I think it's really important that the Baum Center have this. It's a great move.
All right, anyone else? All right, those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Congrats, ladies.
Thank you.
Spencer, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14 on the agenda, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has their annual meeting coming up in August. They've asked for us to appoint a voting member and an alternate to attend that, and so with that, I would leave it to you, Mr. Chairman, for those appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I know that you plan on attending that meeting, and I would move to appoint Bob Woodard, Chairman Bob Woodard is our voting delegate. Seconded.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chair, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
No, we need a.
Pardon?
We need a.
They asked for an alternate.
They asked for an alternate, too. I'm not sure. I know I plan on attending. I didn't know if anybody else had made any indications that they might attend, have any of you.
I personally can't. I've got a prior obligation.
I'll reach out to Commissioner Couch. He sometimes will indicate.
What were the dates on that again, just right?
The 8th through the 10th.
August 8th through 10th.
Yeah, August.
Guys, my hair is on fire. I can't do it.
Oh, just go sell some shrimp.
And it's in Winston-Salem, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, if you need a body.
Bobby may end up going with me as well, so.
Okay. Are you sure we want him to vote on?
Bob's going to be there. We shouldn't need an alternate.
Do y'all want to appoint Bobby as an alternate, just to be sure if he can go?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes, sure. Move to approve.
There's a motion by the vice chair, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Chairman, item 15 is a joint use agreement with the National Park Service Outer Banks Group, and Barton Grover and Jessica Barnes are here for that.
Welcome, Barton.
How are you all doing today?
Very good, thank you.
So the Division of Coastal Management offers a public beach access grant. Outer Banks Forever has requested that Dare County be the applicant. These grants are only eligible to local governments, and this would be two-place restrooms at Old Lighthouse Beach in Buxton. Jessica will give you some more information on the actual project. We would have to enter into a joint use agreement with the Park Service, and there are some clarifications that would need to be figured out with Bobby and the Park Service on how that would look, but I'll have Jessica talk about the project itself.
Good morning again.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you all for taking the time to listen to us today. So this is a really exciting project. As I mentioned before, my name is Jessica Barnes. I'm the Executive Director of Outer Banks Forever. We are the official nonprofit partner of the National Park Service here in the Outer Banks, so we support all three parks, Wright Brothers National Memorial, Cape Hatteras National Seashore, and Fort Raleigh National Historic Site. Our mission is to protect and enhance these special places, and we do that primarily through fundraising. So as we know, the Park Service budgets have continued to shrink, even though visitation to our national parks countrywide, but certainly here in the Outer Banks, have continued to grow. And so we are here to provide fundraising support and a margin of excellence to improve the visitor experience and improve the facilities of our national parks. So this project is actually an extension of our Pathways to Your National Parks program. So we started this last year. We are currently working with the National Park Service to build a new multi-use path at the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse. It goes along Lighthouse Road and straight to the Old Lighthouse Beach Access. If you're familiar with that area, it is one of the most popular beaches on Hatteras Island. Nationally, it gets attention fairly regularly as being one of the best beaches in America. It's also a premier surf spot, and currently, there are no restroom facilities. There are porta-potties, which are not only unsanitary, but really just don't keep up with capacity of the popularity of that area, considering it is also one of our few lifeguarded beaches on Cape Hatteras National Seashore. So this project would build a prefabricated restroom structure. In addition, there would be outdoor shower facilities, and I think it would really just greatly not only improve the visitor experience, it would improve the locals' experience of this area. It also is just more environmentally friendly than having restrooms, porta-potties, which, you know, in storm situations can be very difficult and toxic if not taken care of correctly. So we are working with you all and the National Park Service on this grant from, as Barton mentioned, the Public Beach Waterfront Access Grant Program through the state. We have already secured quite a bit of funding for this project. The total of the project is just over $400,000. We have been approved for a grant for $125,000 from the Dare County Tourism Board. We've also already raised just over $100,000 in our own restricted funds, which includes a grant of $30,000 from the Cape Hatteras Electric Co-op. We are currently in the process to look at other grant funding, particularly from the National Park Foundation. They're very interested in this project because it also, in addition to just being a great visitor asset, it is family-friendly, it will be ADA accessible, and it is weatherproof. So the structure that's prefabricated is built to withstand the wind, rain, any overwash that happens there as well. So it's a very sustainable project. The Park Service is really excited about it. So with this grant, it would help us get about three-fourths of the way to funding the project. Our hope would be that we would receive the grant funds and work with you all and the Park Service to then implement the project as early as next year.
Chairman, what this is, is a pass-through grant, and we've done these with other entities before. This one's a little bit more complicated. It has some issues. We've had some conversations, I've had several conversations with the Superintendent Dave Halleck with regard to this grant. The chairman and I met with Dave last week, and we had some discussions about this as well. There are two issues that normally are easily taken care of, but because we're dealing with the federal government, it's not quite so easy.
Imagine that.
We don't know what you're talking about.
It's a state grant, and like, we've done a bunch of state grants, and we get a state grant agreement that we have to sign. We would then get the grant, we would turn the funds over, they would do all the building, they would keep and maintain it. We're really just the pass-through because we're the only ones eligible for the grant. That's fine, we can do that. It's not illegal, the granting authority allows that and all that, but what they require is two things. Well, what they require is one thing. They require site control. We're struggling with how to set up site control that will satisfy the state at the granting side. Dave Halleck and the Park Service don't have the authority to lease us. If you recall, when the Tourism Board was doing the boardwalk, they did a lease back to us to give us control so that we could get the state grant that allowed them to build the boardwalk. Dave Halleck doesn't have the authority to give us the state, the control of federal property, so we're trying to figure a way to get around that issue that satisfies the state. From my perspective and from the county's perspective, since we're not owning, operating, maintaining, doing anything with that property, we need some kind of indemnities from somewhere that protect us if, you know, two years later, the Park Service decides to close it, or a storm takes it away. The grant requirements are going to require that you keep it there for 25 years, I think, and then is there a payback? And then who pays it back? We signed the grant agreement being responsible for the payback, and yet all we're doing is being a courtesy to try to help facilitate the project. In talking with Halleck about how do we get repaid by the Park Service, he doesn't have the authority to give us the indemnities that protect us from having that liability for the next 25 years as well. I don't know if there are answers to this. I don't know how we're doing it, but that's what the hiccup has been that we've been trying to work through with the Park Service. Barton's had a number of conversations with the state folks. I don't know that we have a solution yet. They've got a deadline coming up. It's early August, right?
It is August 2nd, and actually, on Friday, we did send, there is precedent for this grant funding and the Park Service and the county working together. So in 1989, the county received funding for the Hollover Day Use Area, as well as the Sandy Bay Day Use Area. So, in 1989, the county received funding for the Holloway Day Use Area as well as the Sandy Bay Day Use Area, and there was an MOU with the Park Service for that. And we were able to find the language for that that was sent over on Friday. And then in 2014, also the Rodanthie Beach Access received the same type of funding to be able to support this. So, we haven't been able to put our hands on the language that we used in 2014, which would probably be the more relevant language to us now. But that is, the challenge is figuring out the joint use agreement.
I say all that with, if you approve moving forward with this, and it's okay that if you do, contingent upon us getting satisfactory approvals from the state that we can deal with the site control issues and getting approval, getting indemnity satisfactory to us, that we're covered and we don't have long-term liability for providing the courtesy of getting the grant. If we can resolve those two, then it's a great project and something we ought to help facilitate.
Ms. Chairman, I would move to approve this, given the contingencies and indemnities that County Manager, County Attorney just discussed. Since they're up on the deadline of August 2nd, they need something in place, at least tentatively.
I would second that.
Okay, there's a motion in place by the vice chair, seconded by Commissioner House to approve with contingencies. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Can we get these contingencies? I mean, I'm in favor of this, of course. I'm just wondering, is it even possible to get these contingencies satisfied by the 2nd of August? That's very soon. That's my concern.
One thought I had was applying for the grant and receiving the grant are two.
Totally different lives.
Different acts. And in theory, we could move forward and allow the application. But if the grant was awarded and we couldn't get the indemnities or whatever, then we just wouldn't accept the grant. We would just say, we can't take the money and then leave it at that.
Let's do it then.
All right, anyone else? Those in favor of that motion, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you all very much.
Chairman, that brings us to item 16 on the agenda. This is a memorandum agreement between Dare County and Hyde County for the cooperative maintenance dredging events. Short story, I'll let Barton give you any more detail if you need it, is we have some permits to do dredging. Hyde County needs to do dredging, and they need to tag on to our permits. This MOU authorizes them to use our permit for dredging activities that they're paying for or they're having paid for out of Shala Draft Fund, and indemnifies and holds us harmless. If they violate the terms of the permits, then they're the ones that are responsible for that, and they've got to pay the fines and take the remedial action and all that sorts of things should something like that happen.
That's a good, short and sweet summary.
Yep.
You have more information.
That's what he did, yep. I would move to approve the MOU and authorize County Manager to sign said MOU.
I would second. And this has also been vetted through the Oriental Task Force from Ms. Kate.
Okay, thank you. A motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Barton.
This brings us to item 17 on the agenda. This is an amendment to the capital project ordinance for fiscal year 2025, CIP, and Dave's gonna make that presentation.
Welcome this morning, Dave.
Thank you. This is a cleanup to the adopted capital improvements plan. During the CIP process, we had one request that never got submitted. In looking at it and talking to the new software provider, I think it was the way we set up the users where if you're a submitter, you can't see other submitters' requests. And if you're a reviewer, you can only see things that got submitted, so it never got submitted. The project, part of, not all, but part of replacing the elevators, the two elevators in this building and the elevators in the human services building, is $78,147, and we're doing that. You have a capital project ordinance to increase that project amount by that amount, and we're decreasing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 others that are old, dead projects that we review them every year, usually before we do the CIP. But we did not get that done this year with the new software. So, we're asking you to change the CIP and adopt this amendment to the capital project ordinance.
Okay, any questions, Dave? Motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
That brings us to number 18 on our agenda. This is an offered, or a request for an offer to purchase for Nags Head parcel. In phase three of our construction projects in our EMS work, we had always had scheduled an EMS station in Nags Head, and we've been trying to work on a way to do a joint EMS Nags Head Fire Station at their existing site. They own what I'm gonna call the old bank site, the old BB&amp;T property that's right next door to their fire station. We'd had Oakley Collier work at trying to design something where we could build a fire and an EMS station on that site and in some of the space between it and the current Nags Head Fire Station. We have to build the fire station because they've got to operate the fire station. They can't tear it down and use the property because then they can't operate the fire station. So, we were trying to do that, but we couldn't make it work on the site. The site just isn't large enough to do that. In the meantime, Nags Head was looking for another site to do some other things for their long-term capital needs for various things, not just necessarily the fire station, but they have other campus-wide need problems as well. And so, they were looking for sites to purchase to do that, and so, the county, the town attorney, the town manager and I have had a number of discussions about how do we move these projects along? And basically, where we came up was we needed to separate the two projects. It's just not going to work to do a joint site. Our schedule is such that we need to go ahead and do it. Their schedule lags behind ours. We can't do it on the joint sites. And so, how do we move forward and allow them to move forward? Well, that leads us to, their situation is they need money to buy whatever site they're gonna buy, wherever they're gonna buy it. And so, we talked about what were those sources of funds. One source of funds would be they could sell us the bank property for what they paid for. I think it was $1.7 million. And two, they had made a request some time ago for a refund from the tourism board of some money that they had put into the event site out there. And at the time, we didn't pass it because we were unsure how that was going to impact whatever was going to come at that time of the event center that they want to build. Since that event center now has sort of been pushed to the background as they save money because the funding isn't feasible currently, the question arose, would we then be willing to allow that refund to be made that they had requested previously? And if we did, and they added that to what we would pay for the property, that would then give them some or all of the money they need to purchase another site to do the things that they wanted to do. And so, I ask, how do we move this forward? They've had some preliminary discussions on their end, too. It seems that nobody's approved anything. I can't promise you they say yes or no, but it seems that that's something that will work from their perspective as well. And in asking how to move that forward, he said, I needed to come to them with an offer to purchase with those conditions in it. So, what I'm asking for today is if we're prepared to buy that property and if we're prepared to allow the refund of that money that was requested by the tourism board, then we can do an offer to purchase of that property at that 1.7 million with a contingency in it that we also authorize that refund, submit that to the town, and then at their next meeting, they'll either approve it or deny it. And if they approved it, then we'd be in a position to move forward with that EMS station. We had allocated money in that, in the CIP to cover the cost of land to build an access station. This number is within the amount that we allocated, so we have the funding there available to make the purchase. And so, if that is something that you're willing to move forward with, then I need you to authorize me to prepare and then have the chairman sign an offer to purchase and contract along those lines.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve by the vice chairman. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. The floor is open for discussion.
Okay. I just, little caution here. Do we have anything subject to us taking this action, Nags Head agreeing, and we proceed? Are we going to face any hurdles zoning-wise, ordinance-wise, permitting-wise that could slow down or stop the construction of an EMS station on this property because I sure don't want to buy it and then find that the town has raised barriers to the construction thereof? And then we're in a pickle.
A contract that we would prepare would have other people contingency in it so that we wouldn't close if we couldn't get those approvals.
Yeah.
I trust our good friends. I trust our good friends. I just want to be sure.
You have valid concern.
Yeah, there are, there's two levels of approval there. One is we have to get the town's approval preliminarily with no site plan, having submitted nothing. It appears to be something that could be done. The second thing is it's in the village of Nags Head, and so you have to meet their covenants. For example, we're probably gonna have to have a shake roof on it as opposed to the metal roofs like we normally use to meet the village of Nags Head covenants. And so, there's some things we got to do to satisfy them as well, and we would put all that in the contract.
I just want to protect against any last-minute emergency ordinance changes.
Yep. That's a standard provision that we would always do.
Yeah.
I concur with Rob.
Yep. Yep.
And I'm being really, really nice.
Yeah. So was I, Commissioner Bateman.
And I do know the town, and I echo both of these gentlemen. But I do know the town had originally purchased that building to be part of the emergency complex. So, I know it's already in their mindset to be in that realm from what I understood when they originally bought it.
I don't know what they originally bought. I can tell you that the discussions we've had to date have been, how do we get to yes? How do we get to a place that can satisfy the concerns of the town and the county? And this is where we came to, and so they have been very amicable and have been good discussions, so.
Bobby, didn't they indicate to you they wanted actually to build somewhere else anyway, didn't they?
Well, they have to. They don't have enough space.
They don't have enough space here.
And they can't tear it down first.
Yeah, and also looking at it from an EMS standpoint, that section, area of town is optimal for EMS response for Nags Head in that area. If you move that EMS station further north or further south, your response towns become so out of whack, it's unreasonable.
Okay, anyone else? All right, those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. County Manager.
All right, item 19 on the agenda is a discussion about moving up the date of the Buxton Beach Nurishment Project from 2027 to 2026. I think Mr. Harris may have said this morning, asked about moving it to 2025.
Logistically.
We looked at that as well. It's a great idea, great minds. But the problem was we can't get it permitted that quickly. And so, and again, the costs are sometimes nearly double when you do it in those short terms. And so, 2027 was the earliest, I mean, 26 was the earliest we could get it done, get it permitted, and, you know, give the bidders enough time to bid it and get it in their schedule to get reasonable costs. So, that's what we set on. The reason this came up is because, as you know, we've had, erosion has occurred quicker in Buxton than we anticipated when we put it in. And I think they're right that some of that is a result of that jetty that's down there continuing to fail. That jetty was built back in the early 70s, and for, gosh, 20 or 30 years or 40 years while that thing was up and running and wasn't damaged, it did a great job of holding that beach in place. Now, that sand moves, and there's nothing to keep it from shifting south, and so you lose it at a greater rate than you were losing it when the jetty was whole and was functioning like it was supposed to. Since I've been with the county, we've been to the Coastal Resources Commission, or actually, the Division of Coastal Management, at least three times, all the way back to when Ray Sturza was the planner. So, that's three planners ago. And each planner, so far, I don't know if Noah's been yet or not, but each planner after that, I know Donna has been. When we went to try to see about doing jetties there, we were told, no, we couldn't do it. There are a number of reasons why. The reasons are there's a 50% rule that talks about it's not a repair. If you've got to replace more than 50%, the 50% isn't necessarily just how much damage. It can also be based on cost. And so, all those things, they will not issue the permits to do that. Anything you did there would have to be, quote, "a new structure," and hardened structures are prohibited by statute in North Carolina. You're not allowed to do them. There are six hardened structures that are authorized. They're called terminal groins. Terminal groins are all at inlets to keep the inlet from, like the one we have at Oregon Inlet. They're all terminal groins that terminate at an inlet. Something in the middle of an island like that is not permitted in statute, is not a terminal groin. It doesn't come under that. And even if it did, they don't authorize the six, and I think all six have been built or are in the process of being built. So, we can't, in 2026, go in there and fix that groin or build a new groin to hold that in place. And so, that's kind of off the table. It doesn't mean that we can't pursue that in the future. It will certainly help us in the future. Getting the legislation, if we could get it changed, doesn't necessarily solve that problem because it's not on our land. It's on the Park Service land, and the Park Service is gonna have to authorize us to build a jetty on their property. Whether we could do that or not, I don't know the answer to that. With all that said, as we've had this erosion there at an enhanced pace, I guess, our concern, or my concern, has been just what somebody brought up this morning as well. What about Highway 12? The protection of the houses there and the hotels there has been good and has been an ancillary benefit to our problems, to our projects. But the real reason we did nourishment in Buxton was to avoid losing the road as we did in Irene back, way back in the day, and we lost the road completely, and it was a mess for all of Hatteras Island. If the same thing happened at Buxton, it would be a mess for everything south of Buxton, and that's not something that we could easily remedy. And the ferry site to get to Hatteras, if you were gonna try to come in the other way, is so long because you'd have to come in through Oakley Cove, and it really creates huge logistic problems. So, we can't afford to lose the road there in Buxton, and so the idea was, let's move this thing up so that that road doesn't become imperiled. To date, we haven't, we knock on wood, we've been lucky. We haven't lost the road. We've had sand on it. We've had water on it. That's fine. We can push that out of the way. We haven't lost the pavement, and the goal is to get enough sand out there to not lose the pavement and move that project forward and try to survive this next year so that we can get sand out there in '26 and keep that road up and running and operating. And yes, it costs a lot of money, but that amount of money, if you decide it is, is worth it to make sure that the folks in Buxton and Frisco and Hatters Village and Point South can go and come and do and live their lives, and we can service them, and we can get food and water and all those kinds of things there, too. So, it's an important project, and again, it's really not, it does protect the houses, but that's an ancillary benefit to protecting that road. So, what this is before you for, we had a meeting with the cap improvement committee. We went through all this. We went through the beach nourishment numbers with this. We can do it. A couple of things I'll tell you. We looked at doing this and looked at doing it in conjunction with Rodanthie because Rodanthie has a problem, too, that we've been trying to solve. The numbers don't work. We don't have enough money to do that. The question then became, do we move up the Avon project to do them together? And the answer became, yes, we do. Even though Avon's doing good, it hasn't lost nearly as much sand, and it's in really good shape. It could wait until '27. Moving it up saves us, I don't know, four to eight million dollars in mobilization costs that we would not have to spend that can go in the pot to help continue to grow the pot to hopefully one day do something. the pot to hopefully one day do something in Rodanthe. So we would likely do both projects at the same time so we could get that savings. We'd be putting less sand at Rodanthe than, I mean, at Avon than we would if we waited until 27 and we'd get a big savings there. And again, overall, the model works for that. And with or without Avon, it doesn't allow us to do anything with Rodanthe in the near term because the fund just isn't growing quick enough to do that. While we're talking about Rodanthe, just we did not, we were not successful in getting that grant that we applied for. We have an opportunity to apply again and Barton is working on that. We're trying to get with them and say, okay, we didn't get it. Why? Were there shortfalls in the grant? Is there something else we can show you? Is there some other data that you need that we didn't know about? Whatever we can do to maybe improve the grant and, and we're trying it again. At the same time that's going on, Congressman Murphy is working in Congress to try to get something going, to fund something there. Again, the whole thing with Rodanthe is we got to get to what was $40 million, I don't know what it is now, in order to do that project. In working through our model, Commissioner Ross was looking at some of the, what we call coverage ratios and some differences between the coverage ratios and the cash on hand. We're going to go back and take a look at that and see if we can massage that model and, you know, maybe increase the pots some more and see what we can do with Rodanthe. So we're working on this all the time, but right now, what we can afford and what we need is we need to move that Buxton project up. So with that said, if there's questions, let me know. If I can't answer them, maybe Barton can or Dave.
Bobby, I know we're talking specifically here about Buxton, but that would include the Avon project as well.
It would include the Avon. We've treated them as one project.
Right.
Anyone else?
Move to approve.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bassnight and House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That brings us to item 20. When I put this on the agenda, there was two bills in front of the legislature to change some things with regard to the tax assessor and the tax collector's office and some things that were really unworkable in practice when people, you try to do that. Hosee and Becky had sent us a memo outlining those things. Since this went on the agenda, Senate 640, let's see, yeah, Senate 640 didn't get out of committee. So they did not pass that. So some of the negative things that were in Senate 640 did not happen. However, Senate Bill 607
Still wild.
Still, well, it passed. And the tax assessors associations throughout the state have really been raising cane about it. What they've told us is they plan to repeal it either in the long term or any, or a technical corrections bill that's coming. And so really, there's nothing for you all to do now, given the state of what all this is in. We can't influence something that's already been passed and they're being told it's going to be taken out anyway. So really not anything for us to do. So no action needed there. Which then brings us to the consent agenda.
Bobby, before we move, bring the public up to date. And I had a phone call and talked to you yesterday about this septic issue. And I know that's been through the House and it's been through the Senate to, to correct some of the really crazy stuff that they wanted to do. I'm under the impression that once the budget is signed, that those will, those revisions will go in pla, in, in place. Is that correct?
You may could say what all this is.
Yeah, if you will, if you will.
So in the last session of the legislature, there were some rules adopted that applied to the environmental health departments and the septic tank rules. They were complicated and there's more things than I'm about to tell you because I can't remember them all. But the big deal, the big ticket item to us was when you put in a septic tank, in the old days, when you put in a septic tank, you put in your septic system and then you had to have a repair area of equal size in the backyard or the side yard or something else so that if your system fails, you had somewhere to do it. However, if your system failed and you had enough soil, you could go in and excavate the old system, take out all the soil that was contaminated or whatever, and you could rebuild the system right in place. You didn't have to use your repair area. And so that was nice because it allowed people to have their backyards, they, they had pools, they had things like that and they could do that well. Legislature came in and said, hey, you can no longer repair in the, in place where it was, even if science says it will work, even if you excavate all the old sand, put in new sand, whatever, you can't do that anymore. You have to move it to your repair area. Well, that took a $7,000 repair and turned it into some cases. Part of the problem now has become what you need to do a new system is bigger than what your backyard is. So that puts you into a peat system because you've got to compact it to get in a smaller place. The result of that is a $7,000 repair has become a $60,000 repair. And so for people in older houses on fixed incomes and people that aren't on fixed incomes, but to come up with 60 grand tomorrow to do a septic tank repair is not possible or affordable. And so when we brought that to the attention of the legislature and to the Home Builders' Association and to the other lobbying arms up there, they agreed that they were going to change those rules and some of the other rules that were creating problems. They're particularly problems for coastal for us because we're, we build on smaller lots. If you live, you know, out in Wake County and you got a three acre lot, then having a repair area, a problem because you got a great big yard. But it was a particular problem for us. Nonetheless, they have, they agreed to make those changes to give the, the folks in environmental health some discretion about when to go to the repair area, when they can do it in place, what the repairs are. Those things are, have been vetted by our environmental health folks and the changes that they proposed will work and solve our problems. They have been passed by both the House and the Senate and they're in the budget bill that's now sitting in limbo. And so what's happening now is people that are caught in that trap either have to pump and haul or not do anything because they can't afford to pay that $60,000 cost, nor do they want to pay it, given, and hopefully they'll have a budget here in a month or so and they won't have to pay it. So it, it's created the problem that the chairman was trying to address, but again, it's been passed by the two bodies. It's waiting, because it's in the budget, waiting for the governor to sign off on it or actually for the legislature to
Pass it.
To pass the budget.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks for that explanation, Bobby. I hope that helps, helps the community out there knowing what's going on with that.
If I may? The other concern, if I recall, I see Sheila in the back. There was a restriction of allowing professional judgment by local professionals and we had a real problem with that, if I'm recalling correctly, with that legislation. Has that been resolved? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Josh and Sheila gave us a checklist and we submitted the checklist to our legislative delegation. I think we submitted it to Donna and, and the Realtors and the Home Builders, their lobbyists up there supported it as well. And we had our lobbyists support it. And so with all of us working together, we were able to get the changes that we needed put in there.
Very good.
Thank you, Bobby.
That brings us to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Well, that was quick.
Right.
This is a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
He needs to read them.
He does need to read them.
Yeah, he definitely needs to read them, but
I need to read them, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I jumped the gun on it.
On the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from June 3rd and, and July 14th. We have the tax collector's report. We have some easements. We have to get Bright Speed. We have ClearGov service order for transparency modules. We have influence software agreement for our investment software. We have a 2024 repetitive loss area analysis update. We have the coastal storm damage mitigation fund, budget amendment for the emergency management grant award, fiscal year 2425 financial reimbursement resolutions, resolution with regard to the opioid settlement and supplemental agreement for additional funds and a breaking through task force public awareness campaign to address community mental health grants.
Okay, now, do we have a second?
Second.
It was second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
All right, that brings you to your board appointments. Your first board appointment is the East Lake Community Center Board. Rosemarie Dozier's term expires this month and she would like to be reappointed for another term.
Pleasure to the board.
Move to reappoint.
This is a motion on the floor by vice chair to reappoint. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Bobby, any conversation with that East Lake board? Are they having, it appears they're having trouble finding people to serve. There's three additional appointments over there.
I have not had any conversation with them. Scholar tells me they've got the vacancies, but they have no applications and no one down there willing to serve apparently.
All right, I'll, I'll have a conversation with Rosemarie and see what I can find out.
Number two is the Game and Wildlife Commission. Phil Haywood, Harvey Scarborough Jr. and Buddy Shelton have terms that are expiring, all wish to be reappointed. Dr. Drew Horn's term expires. He does not wish to be reappointed and at this time, the Game and Wildlife Commission doesn't have a recommendation to fill the vacancy.
Motion to reappoint Phil Haywood, Harvey Scarborough and Buddy Shelton.
Second.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman has been seconded by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Dare Library Board. Joanne Wilson Harfst and Susan Poff have both resigned from the library board and the board recommends Adrienne Palmer and Kevin Wright be appointed to fulfill their terms.
Move to appoint Adrienne Palmer and Kevin Wright.
Motion on the floor by the vice chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
On the older adults advisory council, Barbara Francie's terms expire this month, but the council did not recommend her reappointment. Mary Pendle stepped down as the chair and the council recommends Margaret Dennis as chair and Isaac Simonson as the vice chair.
Bobby, I've got a question. Do we appoint the chair and vice chair?
You have the same question I have.
Yeah. Yeah. Or do they, does that board elect their chair and vice chair?
We appoint.
We appoint.
We appoint, that's okay. All right, move to appoint.
Okay, motion on the floor by the vice chairs. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion, motion carries unanimous.
The following, this next is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council. The terms of Anita Bills, Eddie Twine, Amanda Hooper and Helen Fur all expire this month and the council recommends their reappointment. George Barr's terms expires in July. The council did not recommend his reappointment. And then the terms of Willer Spencer, Tom Floyd, Megan Vayette and Robert Parrish expire, but they do not wish to be reappointed. And the council recommends that Kenny Bright, Heath Fountain, Jamie Wentz, Katie Jo Walker and Ivy Ingram be appointed to those positions.
Move to reappoint Anita Bills, Eddie Twine, Amanda Hooper and Helen Fur and to appoint Kenny Bright, Heath Fountain, Jamie Wentz, Katie Jo Walker and Ivy Ingram.
Second.
All right, this is a motion on the floor by the vice chair. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion?
Just a real quick one. Nine total appointments, Spencer, all in the same month? Your whole board could have potentially changed.
Yep.
I'm shocked by that. I thought we did this more in a staggered fashion so that the board isn't shuffled up from top to bottom.
It's actually a pretty large board. It's a large board. It's got 20 some people.
14.
The answer is if we would be doing it now, we would have, but this was created.
Yeah.
You were just trying to get bodies.
Okay. It just struck me that, I thought, oh my God, the whole board's turning over here. What's going on?
Yeah.
This thing was created.
Yeah.
This was created, you know, 30 or 40 years ago.
Yeah, okay. All right.
All right, next is, did we vote on that?
No, we haven't voted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Wanchese Community Center. Terms of Justin Bateman and Robert Walton expire this month and they both wish to be reappointed.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
Motion by the vice chair, second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then your upcoming boards and committees. In August, you have the ABC Board with two terms expiring, the Parks and Rec Advisory Council with one term expiring, the Virginia Estillot Community Center Advisory Board with four terms expiring. In September, you have the Alamo River Region Resource Conservation and Development Council with one term expiring and the Health and Human Services Board with four terms expiring. And then in October, the Dare Library Board has one term expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. It brings us to item 23, county commissioner's business, manager's business. We will have a closed session under item 24. Do you have anything other than that, Bobby, at this time?
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things. One is, we have a, the boat ramp in Rodanthe, we have to do an MOA with the state that we will keep and maintain the non-structural stuff. So if a board needs to be replaced, we replace it. We pick up the trash, we keep it clean, we, we do all the, the minor maintenance. And then if it gets destroyed or damaged, something beyond minor, then they do it. I just need authority to sign that MOA. We agreed to that MOA way back when they built it. I think we even approved it and signed it. But whatever happened at the state level, it didn't get signed. And so they've asked us to approve it once again and authorize me to sign it. So that's
All right, it's a motion to approve by the vice chair.
So
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And this is just for your information and maybe to give some thought. We had a request from the Friends of Youth to use the old youth center that we're in now when we move into the new one. For, for them to move out of this building and move into that building, it would give them some more room and allow them to do some other things that they can't do because of space requirements over here. I'm not asking you to approve or say yes, but as we move forward to move into the new building, we need to be thinking about what is it that we want to use that for? Is that the use that we want? Are there other things that we may need? I'm going to, I'll bring it up to our staff at our staff meeting as well. I don't know what's out there in the community for community needs and so I just want to be sure that if we're going to move somebody in there, that we're doing whatever the highest and best priority for that site is. And so I'll bring it to you to be thinking about as well.
Okay.
And other than the closed session, that's all that I have.
All right. Public Information Office and Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us today?
Not anything to break the word other than a heck of a weather. Is that okay for our block?
Yeah. Yeah, I look forward to that.
It'll be a lot of fun.
Yeah. Thank you. Our finance director, Mr. Clausen, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
All right. Then we move to item 24. We need a motion to close session. You read that, Bobby?
Yes, sir. I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the NCGS 143, 318, 11A3 to consult with an attorney employed retained by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client
in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, receive an update on the opioid litigation, and to discuss the LUTS matter. Looking to see if there's anything else on my list. To also discuss the Kruger opioid settlement as well as potential other opioid-related matters and suits. And also pursuant to 143 318 11A5 to instruct the county staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by on behalf of the county in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract, a proposed contract for the acquisition of real property in the matter of the Schiffman property over here on Runagollin.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chairman, seconded by Commissioner House. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Back to order, and I'll turn it over to you, County Manager.
In the closed session, the Board approved the minutes of the last closed session, consulted with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and instructed the county staff on the position to be taken with regard to the purchase of, or acquisition of real estate. Took no other action.
All right, thank you, County Manager. My bad, I forgot to go to Commissioners', for Commissioner's business before we adjourn for closed session. So we'll go back to Commissioners' business, and I'd like to ask Commissioner Ross if he'd kick it off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. On July 4th, in reference to Jockeys Ridge, they had the Killer Dunes Run, which I was happy to attend and was given the honor of starting the race. Two runner, two hundred-plus runners ran this grueling race through the dunes, and it was a big success. Big turnout, big crowd, and just a super, super event on Independence Day. I just wanted to call that out for Jockeys Ridge. And I'll be joining a call shortly with the committee on the celebration of Jockeys Ridge 50th anniversary next June. I am happy to be serving with some of the leadership on the nonprofit as well as community volunteers as we are working to organize for that celebration next year. Glad to hear all the discussion that took place on Buxton Beach. I just wonder if the exact same concrete and debris structures were left on other beaches, like, I don't know, Martha's Vineyard or Rehoboth? Would we still be fighting, trying to get somebody's attention? It's infuriating, and I sympathize tremendously with the folks that have spoken in public comment. And they need to know, we are not in opposition. We are 100% in their corner on this and looking for every way to leverage our influence to get something going here and progress. Really appreciated the town hall on early college, and I appreciated the comments from Dean Sweeney with regard to COA enrollment and the fact that this opportunity is a terrific one with the land, the means, the resources, providing the choice to students under various criteria, including first-in-college, challenged or underserved communities, students seeking a more aggressive or robust academic curriculum. All can be served and provided for in the early college. So I was very pleased to see that and to have attended that early college town hall. And I think I had one more thing here. Oh, in reference to the chairman's discussion about blue zones, I have instructed County Commissioner's Clerk, Skyler Foley, that all meals going forward shall be spinach salad and other mixed greens. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The frustration with the Army Corps of Engineers, I definitely concur with everyone else who's had issues with the Army Corps. I work very closely with them on a, pretty much a daily basis, trying for dredge permits. And as also with our County Manager knows this full well, too. Usually a dredge permit takes 120 days. With Ms. Katie, our last dredging permits took over two years, and we're still doing modifications on those permits. So we understand what the definite, what the definite frustration with the Army Corps is, because once, once they say, oh, all we need is this and we're done, and you get this, and no, we need this and this. You say, you give them those two, and then it just keeps going and going and going and going. And that's the frustration that a lot of us have had with the Army Corps since day one. On our fishing, commercial fishing, right now, there is a shrimp trade action going on. If you are a shrimp trawler or a part-time shrimper, there is a questionnaire that needs to be filled out accurately and submitted to the ITC investigation by July 26. You can find this on the International Trade Commission website and also through the North Carolina Fisheries Association. What this, what they're trying to do is trying to find out what the impact to commercial shrimping in North Carolina, between North Carolina and Texas, has as it's against the imported shrimp from Ecuador, Indiana, Indiana.
They don't got no shrimp in Indiana.
Indonesia, India, and Vietnam.
They got crawfish.
They got crawfish. So they're looking at what can be done, what, to actually help our local American shrimpers as to fighting the trade from the cheaper imports. So definitely, if you are a shrimper, fill that questionnaire out. On our day in history, I got two of them. 1969, Apollo 11, first air, first rocket to land on, land on the moon, launched on this day. 1874. Dare County approved the budget for 1874, $2,369.20. Dave, do you think you can keep up with that kind of finance? And also, for the most favorite part of all of our Commissioners' meetings, meet the pet of the week.
This week's pet of the week is all of our kittens. We have so many kittens here, we can't choose just one. Come on in and take one or two of these cuties home. And don't forget, the rest of July is Empty the Shelter. Come in and take advantage of reduced adoption fees. To adopt one of our kittens or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Mano. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So please run by our OBX SPCA, grab a couple kittens, and give them a forever home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chairman?
I tell, I tell a pooty tat. Want to thank our service pin recipients, Destin Peel and Barbara Hayes, for their ten years of service each, representing 20 years of service to Dare County. Again, can't do it without you guys. Appreciate it. And our Employee of the Month, Sherri Anne, thank you for your exemplary service. That's all I have.
Thank you, President. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. I see Matt just walked out, but I was gonna ask him, is there anything that we can do to improve the communications with the Buxton? This is not the first time that we've had, that we've had issues down there. And I, you want to address it?
Sure. This is not the first time it's come up, and I've talked to him several times about it. Our biggest issue is the bandwidth we have coming from here to there is not dependable. And we can only do with what we can get in. We've got state-of-the-art equipment. You can see that bank of stuff back there. You know, we've got what we've got down there. It is very difficult to live stream. That's why we don't live stream and do meetings down there, because you can't get the bandwidth to get the picture, the video, the sound, everything up where it doesn't buffer and do the things that we're doing. When, when it freezes, it's buffering because the bandwidth doesn't allow it to get up here. I ask him, you know, what do we do? There's not anything you can do. We've been working on, you know, with the bright speed to try to get redundant fiber and that kind of thing. If we ever got that down there, then that would help some because it would make the pipeline bigger. But right now, it's just a bandwidth issue, is what I'm understanding.
Right, okay. The Boat Ramp Wanchees, where are we at with that parking?
We're not any different than where we were because they don't have the release yet from the state for where they did the petroleum cleanup to allow them to open up the site to allow the parking.
I was down there, and I got a call from a cheezers, and they've cleaned it out, and they've roped it off. And it looks to me like, and this car's and trailer's been parking on, over on the left side, if you're looking towards the west. So I mean, I think that it looks to me like it's.
I know, I'll follow up with.
Being used. It's being used to some degree.
Well, the whole site's not being used.
But the whole site's.
The left side's being used, and they said that was available throughout, is what they told me. But the site where it gets roped off is where they did the remediation, so.
Okay. And I think it was Mr. Harris was talking about, he said Army Corps is out of the responsibility of cleaning the site up. Now it's on the, okay, that was an accurate statement, then.
I, the Army Corps, I don't know what the Army Corps said. They may have said they are. They may say, I can tell you that in the statute, in the FUD statute, the Army Corps is the designated entity to do the cleanup. Now, if, from the Army Corps' perspective, they narrowly define what cleanup is, and they've, they've defined it by the way they define it as they aren't required to pull out all those structural elements. They're required to remove the petroleum products or whatever. To make it even more complicated and worse, you know, the Navy or maybe the Corps, I think it's the Navy, is saying that they got a letter from the Park Service with previous superintendents that when they left, they accepted it and said everything was fine, and therefore they're bound by that, and it's no longer a Navy issue, you know. The Coast Guard's saying it's not Coast Guard petroleum, it's Navy petroleum, so it's not their issue. It's just, and that's still going on. I mean, that's still, and that's what, why we've got the congressional folks in there to say it's a national issue. We don't care who takes responsibility, but somebody needs to, to deal with it. And, you know, we've even talked to Dave Alec, just do we get to a place where the Park Service just has to deal with it and then go fight internally to get reimbursed or whatever, so that somebody does something. But.
Well, it's, it's.
Not getting anywhere.
It's quite frustrating that an elected senator cannot get some answers for us. You know, I, for the life of me, I don't understand it. Much less responding to us in some way. You know, we went there in January, sat down with staff, and staff is frustrated, but, you know, evidently, this is not a serious enough issue for our two senators to step up to the plate and do something, you know? That's the frustrating part.
The Senator's staff told me that they're frustrated because they can't get anybody at the Department of Defense to get them an answer, that they can't, you know. I don't know what that means, but that's what they told, told me when I've asked exactly that same question.
Well, and I know that, but the senators are making a call, and they're not following up, and they're not, they're not engaged enough to, or concerned enough to keep the pressure on, to get some kind of, get some kind of response. And, and that's, that's the frustrating part, Commissioner Bateman. You know, I, I don't understand it. I don't get it. But if I was up there in that position, somebody would be answering my questions one way or the other.
Yeah, I agree. The last thing I had on my thing, you know, we're getting ready to do a study, Parks and Rec, and see what kind of recreational needs and what we need in the county. And, and thinking with that, I just kind of want to have a general conversation with everybody and just kind of throw out my wish list, my dream, my vision for Dare County and Parks and Rec stuff. I'm talking long-term goals. There was a tournament over in Currituck County, and in that tournament, they had forty teams that showed up, and each team paid $800 a team for a weekend to have, and play in that tournament. So they netted $32,000 this and that weekend. And they played, as you turn on the shortcut, they have all the soccer fields and stuff over there, right by the YMCA. Pretty massive complex for Currituck County. Each individual who went and attended those events per day paid $13 apiece. And the one family I'm talking about went there for three days. And so they paid $52 a day to do that. That's 150 bucks, and the place was probably packed full of people for those tournaments. So long-range plans, it can be a moneymaker if we had the property. And then it comes down to what I've been kind of talking to Bobby and to Chairman Woodard about, and Vice Chairman Oveman in the past. That property we have over there in, on the, over the bridge in Mans Harbor. It would be really, really nice if we had that 75 acres cut out to put soccer fields, baseball fields, lacrosse fields, football fields, had a small complex over there, and create revenues, sort of a sports complex. I know it's expensive. I know that it's a long-range plan, but it's something we can maybe look forward to. And if we get that kind of consensus out there that might be something we're looking into, maybe these folks that are doing the study can answer those questions for us. I would envision having, creating a sports authority made up of baseball moms, football guys, soccer dads and everything, to sit on the board to help recruit these people to come in from the other areas. When they go to these tournaments, like the one in Currituck, and they see all these folks there, hey, we're gonna have a tournament in Dare County, like we should do Bobby with the baseball tournament, Babe Ruth League. We had a ton of people attend at those things. Right now, we haven't got the fields or the facilities to do those events of that size. So this is a long-range goal, but I think it's something we can do. Yes, how are you gonna pay for it? I've been in conversation with Bobby and Chairman Woodard, and even Bobby Haney, you know, why don't we go and get a tax on our sales tax and put it in front of the voters? Or do a bond, put it in front of voters, let those guys make the decision, do we really want this kind of thing? And if they do make that, then we'll have the funds to pay for it. I'm a firm believer, folks, that if we take care of these kids today, not only with the education that we're trying to support for them, but we take care of them on the baseball fields, soccer fields, football fields, whatever we do at a young age, then Chairman Oveman and I will not get them in saving lives task force, we will not get them in recovery court, we won't get them in Dare County jail. And we won't have them at $38,000 a year in our prison system later on. It's really important. I think this, of anything that we're gonna be doing in the future in the county, has probably got the most importance, in my opinion, of what we're gonna do in the next three or four years. So I'd like to know what y'all think about it and see what, which way we can go with this stuff as, as the study comes back. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Makes some very valid points there that we need to firmly consider. Absolutely. Commissioner Bassnight?
Thank you. Sorry. Ervin, I couldn't agree with you more. That is something that we really need to be focusing on for a sports complex. I just went to Hartford County where they had the All-Stars tournament. We had teams from Dare County. They went pretty far. Eight U, Ten U, Twelve U. And I was real proud to see and represent, and we had a lot of people from Dare County. Those people stayed in Williamston for two or three nights. They stayed in Edenton for two or three nights. So they took in money in the surrounding, some of them had stayed in Ahoski, I'm not sure, but it was a big deal. The last tournament we had here with the travel ball, travel baseball, I think there were forty teams that played in Dare County. We had them at fields all over the counties. So a complex is something that I'm all on board about, and I will support that in any way I can. Thank you for talking about that. I also appreciate the Board's indulgence in me coming in late. I had an ABC Board meeting this morning, and it was important to me to be there because we had Amber Yance from the Dare Casa coming to speak to us. One of the missions of the ABC Board is to have some sort of alcohol education within the schools. We currently support Roman Gabriel's sold-out program, which he has, does at all of our high schools and middle schools. But we'd like to spend a little bit more, and so one of the ideas we had was to possibly go in the. go in the schools and do a scroll on the closed-circuit TV with some sort of message about, um, alcohol education. And so she came in to make a presentation. They moved her up so I could be there this morning and, and then come to this meeting. And so we're pursuing that. Talked with Steve Bassnight Superintendent. Amber and I will meet with him and see if we can go forward to, to do that, because that's another big piece of taking care of our, our children with the sports and, and, uh, and being sure they don't get involved in things that they shouldn't. So I appreciate that. I also, um, uh, as Commissioner Ross said, I'm appreciative of the Board of Education holding, um, a joint meeting with us about the early college. I was pleased to see so many people show up and express their opinions. I think anytime we can work together as boards and community, we'll get some good things done. So I think we're gonna move forward with that, and I've, I've heard a lot of good comments about that meeting. And one other thing, I did, um, uh, attend the Juneteenth celebration that was held in, in Manio, and, uh, it was great to see Tashambi, one of our own, come back and, and sing. I remember when Tashambi was in the fifth grade, and we used to do a, a pretty expansive patriotic program, which we had to stop because of testing in schools, but anyway. It was expansive, and he was one of our stars in the fifth grade. And after that performance, we had a community member come up and say, I, I want to send this child to music camp because he has a future. And, uh, so I like to think that that was one of the places that Tashambi Selby started his, his career in opera, which he's with the Metropolitan Opera now. And of course, it was great to see John Buford, who was our Dare County Schools Teacher of the Year, accompany him, him, him on the piano. It was great to see John out and feeling, feeling pretty good. I think that was about it for me, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to share those things. Thank you.
Commissioner. Has the, uh, has the new facility in, uh, had us coming?
Oh, the, they're on schedule. We were going yesterday for, I'll go on the Monday before the Tuesday meeting, the third week, but, um, Mark Caston was ill, so we didn't want to be around him in the small trailer. But yeah, they're on schedule, it's looking good.
Oh, great. Good deal. I see they fixed the Kitty Hawk location.
Yes, mm-hmm, got that fixed.
Very good. Well, thank you. Anybody else have anything else? With that said, I need a motion to adjourn until August the fifth.
Seconded.
Okay, it's a motion by Commissioner Bateman, seconded by
Second.
Commissioner Bassnight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Good meeting.